Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 17th, 2023 business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum this evening with Councilmember Wen Excused. On top of the order is approval of the agenda. I need a motion.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes takes us to item one C, which is a public hearing to provide an approximately equal opportunity for persons to express support or opposition for the Olympia-Tomwater Fire Authority ballot measure, Proposition One, at the special election on April 25th, 2023. So this public hearing is to meet the statutory requirements of RCW 42.17A.555 prior to any action that may be taken by the council to collectively express its support or opposition to the ballot measure. For the record, this is a hybrid public hearing. Speakers offering comments may participate in person or remotely by the internet via Zoom. As mayor and chair, I have discretion to call speakers in any order, virtual or in person or alternating. Each speaker shall have three minutes to deliver their comments. There is a timer over my right shoulder that will be active here in a minute. There'll also be a separate timer on the Zoom screen, and you will be notified when your time has ended. I will now gavel in to commence the public hearing. We're going to start with our remote folks that have signed up. And so I'll start with Walter Jorgensen, followed by Jim Lazar, followed by Michael Pate. Takes a minute for them to get loaded up on the screen.
I am not seeing Walter Jorgensen in the signup list.
Oh, you know what? I am so sorry. I knew I was going to do this. I grabbed the wrong page. I went to public comment. I apologize. There was two identical looking signup sheets and I grabbed the wrong one. So I'm going to go to the public hearing list. That'll make more sense. And so we'll start remotely. We have Larry Jeza, followed by Walt Jorgensen, followed by Jim Lazar. So I guess there's some similar people.
Larry is on his way.
Okay.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Larry Jeza. First, I love the Olympia Fire Department. They are a highly rated professional organization with dedicated employees. For over 100 years, Olympia has more than adequately funded our fire department, and they are second to none of their size. And I do not want to put our safety at risk from a merger that the fire chief says will experience quote unquote growing pains, or that the city manager of Tomwater said was quote "going to be a bumpy three or four or five years for the organization." Not only risky, the RFA proposition is an expensive, inefficient, and ineffective proposal. In the first year, it will cost taxpayers $10.5 million more. It will not add to the number of fire trucks, or firefighters, or fire stations that we already have. The $10.5 million does not get us improved response times. What it does get us is more overhead and a new level of government. It will pay for $2.2 million for HR, budget, IT, and public information officer staff to do what is already being done today within our cities. You also get funding for a new level of government, with board and staff costing over $300,000 a year. But that's just the start. The committee referred to this as a quote "modest administrative structure", unquote, and showed comparable RFAs with 30 FTEs in their administration. Olympians will be paying millions more to pay the exact same Tomwater firefighters more money to align with the higher salaries of Olympia firefighters. And to sweeten the deal, all the firefighters from both cities will get a $1.5 million bump up under the reasoning that a larger fire department pays their firefighters more money. Whatever the opposite of economies of scale is, this is it. Just the same people costing more. The plan also puts Olympia's financial stability at risk. Olympia plans on loaning the RFA $8 million out of reserves that we may need. As Jay Bernie said, that quote "$8 million from Olympia is coming right out of our reserves, and so that does leave us exposed, and it makes me nervous." The taxpayers are at risk too. Unlike the property tax, the regressive fire benefit charge can be increased from $10.5 million up to $25 million by a simple majority vote of the RFA board. I will remind listeners not to fall for the arguments that this RFA has proposed will reduce response times. They have tried to conflate the city takeover of basic life support and cares with the RFA, but those are already in progress and are not dependent on the RFA being approved. The RFA advocates have adopted the mantra of financing sustainability, in the sense it doesn't require voters to agree to spend more. But really, it still requires the voters to vote for a levy lid lift during the first seven years, and many more times that if we want to buy more equipment. For these reasons and many others, I urge the city to withdraw its support for the RFA, and if not, the voters to vote no on Prop 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Walter Jorgensen, followed by Jim Lazar.
I did not see Walt.
Is Mr. Lazar in the queue? We can just move on to him.
He's traveling over.
Good evening. I urge the council to defer consideration of this resolution until you have addressed the parks funding impact of the RFA proposal. As you know, the proposal you've submitted to the voters would reduce parks funding by about $1.3 million a year compared to what voters expected when they voted for the two voted measures. It does this while increasing funding available for other city departments. You've met with parks advocates. You know what needs to be done to fix that. Consideration of this resolution should be deferred until you have an action to solve the parks funding problem before you. There are other problems with the RFA as well. When you started this process, you thought that the formation of the RFA would free up about $5 million for other city priorities. Because of the very high property tax valuations this year, that assumption is no longer valid, and that main reason for pursuing an RFA is no longer valid. The fire benefit charge remains highly regressive, more than twice as high per square foot for apartments than it is for large, expensive, single-family homes. If you're concerned about affordable housing, a $30 a month rent increase should not be on your agenda tonight, and that's what you would be voting to support. You should help the RFA process and fix that problem. Balkanization of government with separate governmental agencies for parks, transportation, transit sewer, schools, and ports is generally inefficient and reduces engagement and transparency to citizens. One more for fire does not help. The RFA will put the future of our emergency response at grave risk. As you know, the West Thurston RFA failed to pass their ballot measures and has closed three of their five fire stations and furloughed many of their professional firefighters. I don't want that to happen here in Olympia. We need to keep our fire department strong and keep it local. Please defer consideration of this resolution until you have approved a solution to the parks funding problem. If you do not, you are in effect urging parks advocates to work against passage of the RFA. We know how to work ballot measures. We've helped pass two of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Karen Mesmer, and that's the last remote person that we have signed up though, so then we'll switch to in-person.
Hello, council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Little bit of technical problems here. I don't think anyone questions the need for quality fire services in our community. How we get there shouldn't harm other important goals, though. The RFA will have a disproportionate impact on the parks budget, and this would continue into the future. So the reason for that impact is that there would be reduced property tax authority by the city, and the RFA portion would reduce how much parks is getting. I do appreciate that staff has met with parks advocates, and I want to acknowledge that I think we all realize this is an inadvertent impact and not something that anyone saw coming when the RFA was being considered. We do have some ideas, and there are a couple of ways to solve this. I think it's important for the council, though, to publicly commit to solve this very soon before the RFA campaigns begin. We need assurance that the council is going to maintain the intent of the agreement for funding parks. The interlocal agreement was created when the MPD was approved by the voters, which was the second time we were going out for funding for parks in the recent past. It's the foundation that the voters approved the formation of the Metropolitan Parks District, and that the impact of this RFA, the funding on parks, would really dig into the full intent of the interlocal agreement. The intent was to have ongoing sustained funding for parks, and no one anticipated that this kind of formation of a different government would cause a reduction in that. The community voted twice to pay for parks. There's a long list. We have a great system. But we're really pretty far from delivering all of that that was promised to the voters. And there's also a need to maintain the parks and create more facilities and to serve increasing population. So having a reduction in parks funding right now and into the future would really seriously impact what the community expects and what we want to have for a great park system. I want to urge the council to consider a resolution that would commit to solving the parks funding impact from the RFA, and I look forward to working with staff and the council to solve this unfortunate impact on parks. So I want to thank the city manager for meeting with us, and I look forward to continuing conversations and urge the council to make a public commitment with a resolution about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have in chambers here, I've got Stephen Booz, followed by Larry Dibble, followed by Bob Jacobs.
Is this thing on? All right. Mayor, council members, for the record, my name is Stephen Booz, former president, now member-at-large of IFF Local 468, your Olympia firefighters. Tonight, I'm asking for your support and endorsement for the April 25th ballot measure, Prop 1, the creation of the Olympia-Tomwater Regional Fire Authority. As you're all aware, we've been working diligently as an RFA planning committee for well over a year, and I believe we have settled on what is the best option to improve the services that our two great departments provide to our citizens and communities. I have no need to rewrite what has already been said time and time again by union and department leadership from all over our region, so I'll use a quote from now-retired fire chief Tom Hubbard of the Aberdeen Fire Department. I quote, "The problem with the fire services, we have always made do. We have always adapted to the challenge. This has proven to be our Achilles' heel, as people think that doing more with less is acceptable. Your fire departments are broken. Your firefighters are overwhelmed. Our personnel love our communities, but we are grinding our people into the ground. The staffing model and operational plan we have developed as part of the RFA process addresses these inequities by improving our ability to respond effectively and efficiently," end quote. Although this message pertains to Aberdeen and Hoekwens' attempt to regionalize from last year, it is a powerful message that serves as summation of the woes and needs of many municipal fire departments in our region and state. As I have said in previous public comment, we are working more hours and responding to more calls for help than at any point in our department's history. In 2022 alone, we saw an increase in the demand for our services by nearly 17%. This is contributing to an ever-increasing level of physical fatigue, mental exhaustion, and occupational burnout. We are not a disposable commodity. Although we are highly trained, we are human beings that are more and more frequently being exposed to unimaginable situations to the general public, and we need your help. But we also require the public's help. We need a fire department that matches the needs of our communities, and I believe that creating a new and separate form of local government would allow this to happen. We are desperately in need of an increase in the number of resources and personnel that are able to respond to our emergencies, and we need a stable and fair funding mechanism that will propel us into the future as a world-class fire department. And the proposed plan for the Olympia-Tomwater Regional Fire Authority, Proposition Number 1, is that answer. I strongly recommend and I ask for your endorsement of Proposition 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Larry Dibble, followed by Bob Jacobs.
Hello, I'm Larry Dibble. I'm your past fire chief for 20-plus years. Forty-four years in the fire service, so I've got a little background in the fire department. I broke out one of my uniform shirts today just to come down to talk to you. I haven't been here in five years, and I found that this is a very valuable time to talk. The city has backed a number of regionalizations in my time in the city. They went from a bus company to intercity transit. Lot changed from sewage treatment for Olympia to involve all the partners. The dispatch system from the fire and police departments moved into a 911 system. They've all become very, very effective. I think that we should be proud of that, and I think Olympia took the lead in almost all of those. I think you should take the lead in the regional fire authority also. It's the best thing for the citizens. It's the best thing for the department and the members. It's the best thing for the city of Tomwater and their members. And I encourage you to please vote yes for the resolution for the fire authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Last we have Bob Jacobs.
Good evening. I'm Bob Jacobs, and for the record, I live at 720 Governor Stevens Avenue in Olympia. I have previously submitted my reasons for not supporting the fire authority proposal. Tonight, I want to deal with the way this proposal's possible impacts on the parks interlocal agreement may be viewed by council members. At a meeting not long ago, some council members offered comments about the council's power to decide the allocation of city resources. These comments left me with the impression that there may, may, be some council members who view the parks interlocal agreement as, to some extent, non-binding. I'm a former state budget analyst in two states, and of course, I agree that the allocation of available public resources, usually referred to as budgeting, is the province of the legislative and executive functions. What matters here is that the budgeting function is not unlimited. There are many restrictions on it. The terms of grants must be followed. Employee benefits must be paid. Debt service must be paid. I remember an old firefighter's fund of some sort that used to cost us $1 million a year. Don't know what happened with that. The question in the current case is whether the interlocal agreement is binding on the city. I hope you will agree that it is. When the city promises voters that it will do a specific thing if a ballot proposition passes, and that proposition does pass, the city should do what it promised. I appreciate that your staff is working with parks advocates to find a way to fully honor the interlocal agreement should the fire authority pass. I hope these efforts will be completely successful and will have the council's full support. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes a hearing from folks that signed up or signed up online. For public hearings, I do open it up to anybody in the audience because public hearings are just kind of different procedures, so a lot of people don't know how to sign up for them. So if there's anybody here in the room that did not sign up for the public hearing that would like to speak now, the mic is yours. Is there anybody else? All right, so I will now close the public hearing, and we will head straight on to item 2A. Future discussion of this referendum will be on, under item 6... Sorry, it's later on in the... 6A. All right, so we're on to item 2A on our agenda, which is special recognition. And I'm pleased to invite forward... Oh, we're going to read the proclamation first on recognizing a national day of racial hearing. I'm sorry. I have just been off all day of my words. Rate... racial healing. So, we have a shared reading that we are going to start, and I believe I start to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Whereas the city of Olympia affirms that all people, regardless of their racial, ethnic, and religious identification, their skin color, or their physical traits, deserve equal opportunity to experience well-being in a just society and to be full participants in our democracy, and...
Whereas the city of Olympia acknowledges that we must work to address historic and present-day harms of racism and dismantle the systems that perpetuate racial, ethnic, and religious bias and heal the wounds created by those harms. And whereas, just like those who came before us, it is our duty to protect the children of this country, maintain the communities in which they may all be given the opportunity to succeed, and...
Whereas the city of Olympia understands and recognizes that there is a racial divide in our country, and we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic, and religious bias, and build an equitable and just society so that all children can thrive, and...
Whereas children have the right to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive in nurturing environments that don't violate their safety, dignity, and humanity. And whereas every person has the capability to make a simple change within themselves that can have a profound effect on an entire society, and...
Whereas if we all dedicate ourselves to the principles of truth, racial healing, and transformation, we can bring about the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel this great country forward as a unified force where racial biases will become a thing of the past. And whereas racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the education, social, mental, and overall well-being of all of our children, and...
Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Olympia, in conjunction with others throughout the United States of America, proclaims Tuesday, January 17th, 2023 as the National Day of Racial Healing in the city of Olympia, and urges the community to promote racial healing and transformation, both individually and collectively, as a means to working together to ensure the best quality of life for every child. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 18th day of January, 2023, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
So now, I get to invite forward Michelle Gibson, who is the Senior Director of Branch Operations at the YMCA, to receive the proclamation.
Not my favorite thing, standing and talking in front of people, however, this is pretty crucial. So thank you for taking the time and for reading in unison and separately that beautiful proclamation. So I wrote it so I won't be nervous. Thanks to the city of Olympia for acknowledging and celebrating the National Day of Racial Healing, which is a W.K. Kellogg Foundation initiative, and for making it official with that beautiful proclamation. This is important because you can't have or you can't achieve racial equity and social justice without racial healing. Therefore, on behalf of the South Sound YMCA, we look forward to deepening and strengthening the partnership with the city of Olympia to create a more impactful National Day of Racial Healing for our community next year, 2024, and in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments from the dais? Councilmember Payne?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you so much for being here this evening to accept the proclamation. And, you know, one of the things that I was thinking about as I read this proclamation is, you know, we just celebrated Martin Luther King Day. We're going into Black History Month, and I know sometimes there are certain members of the community that probably wonder like, why do we keep doing this? Why do we need another proclamation for saying things that we've already said a million times, right? And I think that, you know, it's important for people to have perspective and recognize that it's not exactly intuitive in our nature to recognize these things. It's intuitive for us to gloss over it and pretend that it's not something we need to address. So that's the importance and the significance of this council, reading these types of proclamations. And so I just wanted to state that because it's important for people to recognize that it's very healing and very important for people who need to hear these words from their elected officials. So, thank you.
I don't want to follow that, but I'm going to want to thank the YMCA for bringing this to us and for being a leader as an organization in our community that puts front and center diversity, equity, and inclusion, and has just developed that culture within your organization that's been... it's leadership for all of us. So thank you very much.
All right, we are going to go on to this evening's public comment, and hopefully I got the right list in front of me this time. So a public comment is an opportunity for our community members to speak to council. They can talk about whatever's on tonight's agenda or any other kind of city business. We ask that you stick to two minutes. There's going to be a two-minute clock that's going to start here in a minute. I call people forward in the order that they signed up. I do have remote and in-person commenters this evening. I will lead off with remote commenters. And, yeah, we ask that you don't speak to anything that we've held a public hearing on in the last 45 days or in the future 45 days, which would include tonight's. I mean, if you were going to speak on the public hearing, you already would have done that. So no worries there. We'll start with Walter Jorgensen and then go to Jim Lazar.
Walter is...
All right, so then we'll go straight to Jim Lazar.
Traveling.
All right. Shouldn't have gone far.
Thank you. More than 20 years ago, the city adopted a long-term financial strategy. Perhaps it needs to be brought back before the council. The strategy calls for maintaining what we have before building anything new or launching any new programs. I fear that the city has strayed away from that commitment in recent years. I'm very concerned about sidewalk maintenance. When we passed the Parks and Sidewalks Funding Measure in 2004 and dedicated $1 million a year to sidewalk construction, the city began devoting the previous general fund appropriation of $175,000 a year in sidewalk funding, dedicating that to sidewalk maintenance and using the new money for construction. That maintenance funding has been redirected somewhere else in the budget in the last few years. I walk regularly, something I've done since having three knee operations back in 2017. Even our new sidewalks are deteriorating. There's tripping hazards in Briggs Village and Whitmore Glen, two new neighborhoods near my home. Older sidewalks in the South Capitol neighborhood need work. Walking routes to school have tripping hazards, and people face hazards when they walk to the bus. Other maintenance needs exist at our parks, our city buildings, our streets, our paths and trails. I'm here tonight to ask the council to direct the staff to adhere more strictly to the long-term financial strategy in preparing the next operating budget. Please maintain what we have before launching anything new, like the, I think, nine new staff hired this year to offer additional services. We need maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Michael Pate, followed by Esther Cronenberg.
Michael's on his way.
Hello?
Hello?
I was here for the electric fence ordinance, not really a public comment. So actually, if you had any questions regarding this particular device is the reason I was here, not specifically for public comment on any other, any other item on the menu.
All right, thank you. That's coming up under other business, I believe, item six C. Yes, so?
That's mine here.
Great, well, we have staff on hand, and if we don't feel like we can get questions answered from staff, then we'll ask them to reach out to you, but thanks for signing up.
Thank you.
You bet. So next, we're going to go on to Esther Cronenberg.
Esther's traveling.
Got it. I'm sorry, is Esther available? Hello, you need to unmute? Then we'll start the clock. Hello?
Yeah, hi, I'm Esther Cronenberg from the Green Cove watershed. We recently submitted documents to you on the Green Cove Park project that's now under a formal order for cleanup under the Model Toxic Control Act. Continuing a decade of non-cooperation, Mr. Mahan again has not provided the necessary information the city asked for to make a reasonable decision on his project. In fact, he continues to actively resist and fraudulently conceal this information, even after being put under a formal order by the Department of Ecology. Yet despite many formal denials, the city's CEPa official recently decided to give this proposal to a public hearing and issue an MDNS against the findings of the city staff which recommended denial. After receiving more comments from the public and ecology, the city decided to postpone the hearing and allow Mr. Mahan yet more time to revise his application. We strenuously object to coddling Mr. Mahan any longer. The city has failed to follow numerous sections of CEPa law, including issuing an MDNS as a threshold determination, which was deemed illegal in a two thousand and five appeals court decision to which the city and the Thurston County were both parties. This latest postponement is another example of the city's slavish behavior to Mr. Mahan and its flaunting laws designed to protect the public health. Neither should the city bear the burdens of Mr. Mahan's bad business decisions. This is an industrial toxic waste dump not suitable for housing. Has the city considered the cause of contaminated city water and dangers to the public health? We're tired of fighting the city to do its job to protect the public and demand that the city council tell its planning staff to deny this project once and for all until ecology says it's been cleaned up. Common sense dictates housing families on an industrial toxic waste dump is a terrible, immoral proposition. Please cease and desist. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to in-person commenters. We'll lead off with Whitney Bowerman, followed by Ken Ringerling.
Okay, it's public speaking, so you'll have to tell me if I'm in the right spot? Okay, good to go? All right. Good eve, or can I start?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, City Councilmembers. I am here to address item six D on the agenda, the awarding of lodging taxes, specifically the twenty-five thousand dollars to Capital Lake Fair. By now, you are aware that Capital Lake Fair discriminated against a child with disabilities. Capital Lake Fair's response, after days of social media backlash, was to post on their Facebook page that the child would be allowed back into the process. There was no apology issued and no commitment to amending their policies to ensure that this never happens again. Additionally, throughout the past several days, Capital Lake Fair has been removing comments from its Facebook page and updating its website to remove contact information and its list of sponsors, supporters, and board members. They are responding to this debacle with a lack of transparency. They don't get it. This incident is emblematic of a systemic problem within the Capital Lake Fair organization. The organization has failed to grow with the times. Capital Lake Fair receives considerable public funding and support from public entities, and these entities should discontinue their support until the Capital Lake Fair program makes drastic changes. When we know better, we have the responsibility to do better. In 2023, we know that Olympia sits on stolen land that should be returned to an estuary. We know that all kids matter, whether they have disabilities, are BIPOC, trans, gay, or are kids like mine who simply wouldn't be caught dead in a princess dress. As a community, we cannot afford to embrace archaic traditions that refuse to adapt to the times, even if these traditions have been fixtures in our lives for many years. I am here to request that you not award the twenty-five thousand dollars in lodging tax monies to Capital Lake Fair because they employ discriminatory practices and do not appear to committed to working towards amending those practices. Secondarily, I am here to request that moving forward, the city work to ensure that the community traditions that the city supports align with the city's values around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken Ringerling? Ringer, Ringerling?
Ringering.
Ringering, sorry. Couldn't read the writing.
That's the right I've been dealing with in my whole life. I am past president of Capital Lake Fair, and my theme last year was unity in our community. And I endeavor to see that come to fruition. I have handed you each our response, and I think it's gotten to you. I will read that into the record. Capital Lake Fair Royalty Scholarship Program is a long history of supporting young women. Those who participate are nominated by their schools, meet rigorous criteria, and are working to further their academic education. This has never been a beauty or popularity contest. The scholarship application requirements and criteria are not intended to exclude. On January fifth, the Capital Lake Fair Board of Directors reviewed the applications for the scholarship program. There was a concern that one candidate's application did not meet the necessary criteria to proceed. The members of the board who were present voted to return the application. They did not want to single out the student in a public setting when she was not chosen to proceed. This was not a decision they wanted to make. The board felt they were making the right decision at the time. The board realized that their effort to be equal and fair to all candidates, they were inadvertently creating an inequitable guideline for those who were wished to apply. Their action was based on the history of requiring certain consistencies. Capital Lake Fair stands behind its many years of supporting individuals, families, and nonprofit charities that impact all residents and guests of Thurston County. As of January sixteenth, the qualified applicant from the royalty scholarship program has been reinstated. She is welcome to advance to the next stage of the process, and we are currently reviewing ways to incorporate inclusion for students that might otherwise not be included in the process. We will promote awareness.
Thank you. We've run out of time. I'm so sorry. I have to be fair to everybody, so?
Understand.
But we have it here, and we also have it in our email inbox. So thank you.
Can I make one quick caveat? Okay.
I'm sorry. It's the rule. Next, we have Cindy, no? All right. So that concludes public comment for the evening. And we are, generally, I open it up to folks that want to make any comments from the dais or have questions for staff. Councilmember Madron?
I know that we're going to talk about the Capital Lake Fair stuff later on in the agenda when we're talking about the lodging tax stuff, but just looking over the statement, the one thing that I see that isn't there is the acknowledgement of harm done and/or any kind of apology. So I'm grateful that you're here tonight to speak to, you know, some of the perspective from Capital Lake Fair, and I hope to see more from the organization as the days unfold.
Councilmember Parshley, followed by Mayor Protem.
As far as the LTAC funding, I will make my comments during that section of the agenda. I mainly wanted to kind of reach out to Jim Lazar and say that you should look at the work plan for the Finance Committee. We will be having not one, not two, but three different meetings and presentations on transportation funding now and in the future for the City of Olympia, which will include sidewalks and our multimodal traffic master plan. So we are taking this very seriously, and we'll be going forward. We're trying to make sure that we maintain all of our pathways.
And Mayor Protem Gilman?
Thank you. I both wanted to respond to Mr. Lazar and Ms. Cronenberg's comments. The example of the Briggs Village, I don't understand that the city maintains sidewalks in neighborhoods or in apartment complexes. So I think we, there's two conversations. One is about transportation funding and adequate street maintenance and all that, but the other conversation is about our sidewalk policies and both who's responsible and what sorts of carrots and sticks the city might use to encourage the person who's or the organization who's responsible to maintain that sidewalk. So I think that it's actually not a budget question at this point. I think it's a policy question. I just, and we're going to continue to learn more. Land use is also going to have some policy conversations about maintenance of streets, sidewalks, paths, et cetera. And then also related to land use, I would appreciate it if at our land use meeting, which is coming up on Thursday, if there actually are documents. I wasn't aware of Ms. Cronenberg's concern that the city had requested information that was not provided by the project proponent for Green Cove and that we had had repeated denials and that city staff had recommended denial of that CEPa review. So if we could get clarification about that at the land use meeting, that would be super helpful. I just, I wasn't aware, but I'd be very interested to learn more there.
You got that, Leonard? All right, thank you. Director, Community Planning and Development. All right, anything else? Okay, so we're going to move on to now it's time to adopt our consent calendar for tonight, so I need a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or polls? I have two polls that I know of. I've got item two B and two C, oh, sorry, four B and four C. So four B is approval of our council meeting calendar and committee assignments, and we just needed a poll for a date change. And we discussed this at agenda setting, and do you want to talk a little bit more about it, Councilmember Madron?
Yeah, our retreat, our mid-year retreat was scheduled for June tenth. That's the same day that the city is hosting a World Oceans Day event in collaboration with community partners. So I guess in an agenda setting, you all said June seventeenth is just fine. And I'd appreciate if we got an updated calendar sent out to us, because sometimes when I'm looking for stuff, I pull up the wrong one, and we also don't have a council member who's missing, want to make sure she gets the memo. So thank you for that flexibility. I appreciate it.
You bet, and I think at agenda setting, we looked at the draft calendar, and that is a council meeting week, the seventeenth. So it's not like we were trying to add it on to a vacation week. And so anyhow, so it's seventeenth, I think consensus works great, okay? So we'll leave that as amended in our minutes. And then on item four C, really just a poll for comment, and it's just to remark on the ordinance that adopts the City of Olympia's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And this is like one of those things, the cities only need when there's an emergency, and they're very, very important. And so I went to, I talked to Jay Burney, our city manager, today about scheduling a work session to go over this document, because I think it's been years since we've all sat down and talked about what would happen if the big one hit or, you know, we had a major fire. You know, we're going to be seeing more and more types of crises coming our way, I believe, and so it's really important for us not only brief ourselves, but to provide a way for our community to get updated as well. So look for that coming up sometime this summer, maybe fall? And yeah, sometime this year, we're going to have a study session on that. All right, so since we all agreed to the date change and the other one was just a comment, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, consent calendar is approved. Takes us to other business. We have four items this evening. The first one is item six A, and that is consideration of a resolution expressing City Council's support for the Olympia-Tomwater Fire Authority Ballot Proposition Number One at the special election on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. This would be following the public hearing this evening that we gave to afford persons approximately equal opportunity to express their views in support or opposition to the ballot measure. All I need for this one is a motion?
A motion? Or do we want to do comments first?
I don't think, I'm sorry, I can't remember the format because it's?
I think you could do a motion, a second, and then take comment before you take action.
There you go, that's what, we'll do it then.
I move to adopt the resolution expressing City Council's support for the Olympia-Tomwater Fire Authority Ballot Proposition Number One at the special election on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I need a second, then we can discuss.
Second.
All right. We've got two seconds. All right, discussion from the dais. Our Mayor Protem Gilman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. So I've had concerns through the process, and I expressed my reservations and concerns when we voted on this, bringing it here. And so I still hold those concerns, but I also very much value the principle that we have in our council guidebook, that once we've made a decision as a council, we move as a body. And so for that reason, I'm not opposing moving this on as a recommendation to the voters, and prove me wrong.
Thank you, appreciate that. I've got Councilmember Parshley, followed by Councilmember Payne.
I'm not going to rehash a bunch of things that have been said over the RFA, the details, get into the nitty-gritty. I just want to comment on a couple of things. Parks, we are committed to minimizing impact, there is no doubt. Our city manager has met with Parks Advocate, Councilmember Cooper, and myself have met with Prac Chair Ruth, Maria Ruth. So we are committed to that, and as Finance Chair, I can tell you, I'm committed to minimizing that. We have a great park system. We don't want to harm that. We've been accused of manufacturing a crisis in our firefighters. I just want to speak to that. It's like the cat hanging on the tree. It hasn't fallen off the limb, but it's hanging there by its nails. And that's kind of how I feel like our fire department is, and our both fire departments. And the reason I can say that is we met with some of the firefighters a week ago, and these are the statistics for the first week this year. Olympia saw over three hundred and seventy calls. Tomwater saw over a hundred and twenty-five calls. One of the firefighters I was talking to was twenty-four on, twenty-four off, but their call volume was so high, she could not leave at seven AM when her shift was over. She had to work till eleven AM to noon. She went home, slept until seven AM when she got back on shift, and she did this for three days in a row. Because we don't have enough firefighters, we don't have enough resources. The RFA is the best way to share resources, provide services, and support our firefighters.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne?
Yes, I just want to speak to a few of the comments that I heard tonight in regards to some of the things related to if we take action on this, we're essentially supporting a regressive nature of the fire benefit charge, things like that. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, we are making a decision for our community to make this choice for themselves. That's what this vote is going to do tonight. We are not voting to hurt our community members with a regressive We are not voting to hurt our community members with a regressive fire benefit charge. Staff has worked very hard to address some of the concerns that have been raised about the regressive nature of the fire benefit charge. They've also addressed some of the concerns even about parks that we heard tonight and the reserves, which I believe the $8 million reserves, which will be paid back over time, which that was a point that was not stated earlier. And I say all of this just to say that it's important for us to really hold that and sit with that, that this is about allowing the community. We are presenting this information to all of you so that we can decide collectively for ourselves if we want to pay this so that we can be prepared for the future that is really inevitable. And the city has a responsibility for education and outreach to the voters, and we will do our best to do that. But make no mistake, this is about presenting the information to the community so that we decide collectively for ourselves how we want to be served by our fire department.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and thank you to everyone who spoke. I appreciate the comments and I know there's some folks that spoke tonight that have been around the city for a long time, watching what we do and providing a lot of really good input. I think the thing that is, is at least was difficult for me in the beginning of the RFA process, you know, recently I was quoted with something I said early on in that process. And I think the thing that I didn't understand at that point is that the fire benefit charges ask actually the least regressive and most progressive and equitable tool in our toolbox, not like sales tax, which it's funny to me that no one complains when we do a sales tax measure to help the issues that they really like, because that's the most regressive thing in our toolbox. I also think it's important that we talk about the layers of government that we've had to create since Tim Iman brought the 1% cap on property tax to the, to the state of Washington. We have a, an amazing finance director at the city, Aaron B. Miller, and he has now been able to show us our 10-year projections. Our city finances are broken because of that 1% cap. And so just like we created the metropolitan parks district to help the overall benefit of the city of Olympia in the long term, we need to create the Olympia-Tomwater Regional Fire Department. And that's just the way it is. And if we aren't able to do that as a community, then we have some work to do to figure out what the next steps are to help bolster this system for our firefighters because as has been said, the system is falling apart. We're struggling. I read an article the other day that, you know, I think in California, one city, the largest, the most paid employee, highest paid employee is a fire captain because there's not enough firefighters and they're having to work so many extra hours. So, you know, this might sound a little bit like a campaign speech, but this is the facts of the reality of where we are in the city of Olympia right now. And this is the best choice in front of us. Public policy is not perfect and we will continue to make it better if we succeed. And I also will lift up that every single person on this dais and every single person on the executive committee is, is committed to keeping our park system whole and keeping the rest of our city whole. And that's why we've made this proposal to the voters in April. And if it happens, we'll figure out the next steps. Thank you.
In closing, I just want to add that I've, I've heard this comment several times and I, I can't hear it one more time without speaking up, that we would never manufacture a crisis for our community. I find that offensive. I mean, we deal with crises that God hands us, every nature hands us, you know, we, we deal with those. Why would we ever create a crisis for our community? So I just want to get that on the record. This is real. And as you've heard, and we've been dealing with this, really specifically with the study on, on a path forward for regionalization, but it's been years in the making. This is not a snap decision. No one up here would ever put something on a ballot to raise taxes on, or not raise taxes, but to increase any kind of fees for our community without a great deal of thought. So I just want to say I'm ready for, to call for the vote. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We're going to item 6B. That is a Lot Clean Water Alliance update. Planning for the future again, right? Regionalization, one of our greatest examples is our Lot system. So I'm really pleased to invite forward Mike Cannelli, who is the Executive Director of the Lot Clean Water Alliance, to give us an update.
Yeah, great. Thank you for having me tonight. Yeah, Matt Cannelli, Executive Director, took over in December. I've been at Lot for about eight years. And I'm going to be talking to you about Lot and our future. So Lot, Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, and Thurston County. Yes, you can see Councilmember Parsley up here. She's been serving the important role as our Board President here over the past year. And we have an elected official from each of the partner governments. We have about 62,000 accounts or so, and our mission is to protect public health and the environment by cleaning and restoring water resources. And how we do that is primarily at our Bud Inlet Treatment Plant. That's right here in downtown Olympia. We have about 13 million gallons per day come down to us every day. So to put that in perspective, if you took a football field and you built a four-story building on there and filled the entire thing with water, that's raw sewage. That's going to hurt you and the environment. And that's what our job is, to take that and make that safe again. And so that's what we do every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We discharge to Bud Inlet. It's an impaired water body per ecology, so we have very strict standards that we meet, the most strict on Puget Sound. And what we operate under, and around in the late 1990s, an effort was underway, and it came together in what was called the Wastewater Resource Management Plan. That's our long-range plan. It was, had extensive public input at the time. And what the question that they were trying to answer was, how are we going to responsibly manage growth into the future? More people connect to the system, more wastewater flows coming down. How, how is this going to be managed responsibly? So with that public input, there was a series of public values that were created, and some of them are listed here on the screen. But primarily, that's treating wastewater as a resource. So that's like creating reclaimed water, for example, looking for community benefits when you build infrastructure. So you see that in our project. So some of the things that you see every day that, that Lot has been a part of is right out of this Wastewater Resource Management Plan. It's called the Highly Managed Plan, and I'll tell you why that is in a minute. But the original strategies that that Wastewater Resource Management Plan put together was, one is, is flow reduction. If you can get flow out of the system before it ever gets down to your infrastructure, you don't need to build new infrastructure, staff it, all of that. So that was a main tenet. Continued discharge to Bud Inlet. So it was a series of scientific studies that went into putting this plan together that confirmed that continued discharge to Bud Inlet was safe. Production of reclaimed water is part of that, treating wastewater as a resource. The original plans set about to do decentralized treatment plants that were supporting the larger treatment plant here in downtown, and also doing reuse irrigation, groundwater infiltration. And it set about a continuous planning approach. I really like highlighting this part in our community because we do it differently than most do. So continuous planning approach, that's how you get the nickname Highly Managed Plan. Some communities manage growth by projecting long-term, they build a big treatment plant, and then they grow into it. We do this planning every year. So we take advantage of new data, new technology, and then we expand when we need to. We're looking far out, but we're also constantly tracking that growth and how things change. And it's been effective to delay some infrastructure improvements, take advantage of technology. So it's what we operate under with ecology as well. We submit annual reports to them. So when it comes to flow reduction, we've saved 1.3 million gallons since the late 1990s. And it's been so successful that actually we're kind of hitting a peak a little bit. Nowadays, you have low-flow showerheads, all the building codes have kind of caught up over time. There's still more room to gain here and certainly messaging out water conservation is a benefit for the wastewater treatment as well as water. So we'll continue that as part of our wet science center and school outreach. But what we're really driven by now with capacity in our treatment plant is actually the nutrient load that comes to us, the nitrogen and, and that oxygen uptake that's needed to process all of that. So that's kind of a shift that we're moving to that I'll tell you about. Bud Inlet Discharge, that's second bullet item. So we continue to do that highest level of treatment on Puget Sound for that impaired water body that we have here, and we operate under the strict discharge limits. We just upgraded our biological nutrient removal process. That's the way that we take ammonia and ultimately convert that to nitrogen gas and remove that oxygen demand. Our, our former system was put in, in the early 1990s, so it was approaching almost 30 years old. So we did a $29 million upgrade, state-of-the-art. It's performed as some of the best in the nation. Somebody asked me this recently, they said, is there a rankings list? And I said, I kind of wish there was, because I want to see where we at, where we are. But I've been doing this, including treatment design, for over 20 years. And I can tell you the numbers that we're getting are the lowest I've ever seen in my career from, from a biological nutrient removal standpoint. And we've checked in with some experts as well. So we're really proud of that treatment that we get. When it comes to reclaimed water production, out of the original plan, Lot built two facilities for reclaimed water. One is at our main Bud Inlet Treatment Plant. The other is out in, on Martin Way in Lacey, produces about 1.5 million gallons per day. That's used in the city for irrigation, it's used at state parks, it's used at the Port of Olympia. The Tomwater Golf Course uses 600,000 gallons per day of reused water, reclaimed water in the summer. So there's a million gallon storage tank out there. So that's drop for drop. That's an offset that's not needed for potable supplies when you use reused water for things like that. And then in front of the children, Hands-on Children's Museum, you see the East Bay Public Plaza, that water feature. So those are some opportunities that we can message the benefit of reclaimed water. We also built the Hawks Prairie Recharge Basin out in, at, from that Martin Way facility. So that is infiltrating that reuse water after it goes through a series of wetland ponds before it infiltrates in. And we recently completed a scientific study to, to confirm that that was a safe approach for the future. That is a great example of integrating the community benefit with infrastructure. So that park is heavily used. And when it was built, it wasn't this way, but you go out there now, lots of warehouses and things. So this is kind of a little oasis there for the folks that, that work there. And then the city of Lacey and Olympia, in a joint partnership, went into the Woodland Creek Facility that's, that's operated there, and that's also offsetting municipal water rates. So we took on this planning and master planning. We're looking out to 2050. That's our, that's our horizon that we're looking, because the original plan was about 25 years, and we're looking another 25 years. We have way more data now, you know? We have down with TRPC, we can see down to the, to the individual parcel and then how it's going to develop. And we know wastewater generation rates per person and all of these kind of geeky things in order for us to basically project out how much wastewater that we're going to receive in the future to be able to, to treat that. We know more about septic-to-sewer conversion rates now. We have the results of our reclaimed water study. We also know how to operate a decentralized facility like Martin Way and what that takes. And we have a robust pilot program where we test new technologies, so we can take advantage of some of that in this planning as well. Permit regulations have changed. There's a nutrient general permit on, for Puget Sound. There's a, there's a limit on the amount of nitrogen that we can put into, from Lot into Bud Inlet. That's from ecology, that was recently adopted. So we know more about that picture for the future. And we know more, more about climate change than we did back in the late 1990s, right? How to take advantage or how to respond to sea level rise, how to respond to more intense storms and pumping. So we went through this master plan approach where we did it in a series of phases, and I'm talking to you now under phase three, where we're rolling out the, this information, we're going to be doing a public forum, get further feedback, and then we'll ultimately ask our board to adopt that, this master plan. So the first was a site plan, where we looked at Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, and then we looked at capacity overall in our system, including reclaimed water. So down here at Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, we look process by process. Okay, how do we need to, you know, expand certain treatment processes over time? Are there new technologies? Do we have enough space? All those type of things went into creating this graphic that outlines our options for the future. Lots of flexibility. That's been a tenet of ours over the last 25 years and it will continue to be. It's, it's served us well. Our treatment plant's pretty hemmed in, and so this recent upgrade that we did, and you can see it says incorporate recent major upgrades, that kind of white box, we were able to combine some tankage in this recent upgrade, so it freed up some space. So we master planned around that. We identified that we do need to grow a little bit in the future and have that option. So in the yellow area on the bottom of the page, we're talking to the Port of Olympia right now in order to try to secure some property for, for future development, should it be needed. So just Lot, a lot of things went into creating this look for 2050. And then we looked at capacity overall, and it was somewhat iterative with that first step. When we look at capacity, the original Wastewater Resource Management Plan said, okay, as growth comes to town, develop more reclaimed water. You don't have to put that out into Bud Inlet because you're capped on that, so we'll just produce reclaimed water. We'll just produce that resource and, and get it out in the system. And that original plan relied on infiltration basins like we have at Hawks Prairie. But working with our consultant, we came up with another option. And that option is, well, we're doing really good at treatment down at our main treatment plant. So could we just focus on that, maybe even do better and, and drive that nitrogen level even down further? And I'll explain that second. But first, I want to explain the reclaimed water option, kind of this base case that we went through. So with building multiple satellite facilities, and the original plan had three, and then building an extensive purple pipe network where you could do reclaimed water, and you see this in Florida, Arizona, those type of, of areas. It's somewhat of a challenge to operate a remote facility. We've been doing it well out of Martin Way, but security, you have screening, pumping that you have to double up, you have chemicals, staffing, all of these things that come into just operating a remote facility. So that's a factor. And we've also learned that it can be flow limited. So if you want to expand reclaimed water, you actually need the raw wastewater to come to you before you can turn it into reclaimed water. So the Martin Way site itself is somewhat limited right now until more people connect to the system and we get more in order to expand. So that's a limitation that's been learned over time. And these sites that we purchased back in the mid-2000s to develop as infiltration basins, there was a range of estimates on how much you can infiltrate into the ground. New science has said that it's probably on the lower end of the infiltration, so you end up having to connect multiple sites, which is costly. And the purple pipe network that was envisioned back at the time has somewhat been limited to kind of these main, forced main areas, kind of as you start to develop a purple pipe network, you need booster stations, you're basically building another water system. So it's, it's been used as a resource effectively, but not spread out like you have where you can irrigate in more arid areas that would need that water all year round. So what the reclaimed water option looks like in taking it into account lessons learned would be, and you can't really see it here, but that, this purple line is basically a pipeline all the way down from the Bud Inlet reclaimed water plant to a site we own, we call our South the Chutes property. That can actually take the kind of water that we would need to infiltrate. It's over eight miles long, 100-plus million dollars in order to do that. And you're pretty much saying, okay, this is our option. We're gonna, we're going here, right? We're building this and this is where we're going. Probably even picking up some of those other sites that you see in yellow there. Still expand the Martin Way plant, you know, still, still expand our existing infrastructure. But that's what it would take in order to do that option. That's why this enhanced treatment approach really was interesting to us because could we add new technologies onto the backend of the treatment plant to really get nitrogen load down further, kind of get treatment levels down further? And here, kind of in this, this tertiary nitrogen removal and filtration, these new steps, is, is where there's technology that's actually proven that we can implement. And so I'll illustrate how this works. So Lot is regulated by the Department of Ecology on the total amount of nitrogen, just one of our, but just to illustrate how, how this works, regulated on the total amount of nitrogen. So just say this total pounds that you can put in every day. So more people connect to the system, that limit doesn't change. So you need to do something. Either get that water out and produce reclaimed water or do better treatment. So I'll show you what better treatment looks like and still meet that same cap. So if I take a given amount of water, and this is not to scale, but the yellow is nitrogen. And so for that given amount of water, there's remaining nitrogen after we do our treatment in that clean water. amount of water, there's remaining nitrogen after we do our treatment in that clean water. So I take that same amount of water, and I do treatment even further. So I get nitrogen down even lower. What that means is you can actually add more water to the system and still meet that same cap. So we're already doing that with our existing technology. So we're already driving those numbers well below our permit levels, and we're building that capacity in by doing that. And then you basically just add treatment steps as you continue to need to over time. So what we ended up with our master plan strategies was, yeah, focusing on existing treatment makes sense. We're doing it now. It's proven. It really makes a difference for every million gallon per day that you can kind of get capacity. That's almost seventy-four hundred new connections to the system. I mean, it's huge gains to be made when you look at focusing on existing treatment. But we don't want to forget about reclaimed water because we have capacity to expand at our existing facilities out of Martin Way. We have capacity to infiltrate further at the Hawks Prairie site. We have capacity to expand at our Bud Inlet reclaimed water plant. Even the pipeline that goes to Tumwater can take more flow. So we have capacity. But rather than just develop that capacity and build an infiltration site and put that in the ground, just that Lot's driving that, we worked with Olympia staff, Tumwater, and Lacey staff, and we're just coordinated for what are your future reclaimed water needs? Where are you going in the future? And so Lot is ready to respond, both in treating wastewater as the cities determine growth, but also as the cities determine where their reclaimed water development goes. We know what we would do. And that's important in our flexibility and adaptability. So reclaimed water is very much part of the picture. We're just ready to go there when the need is. So in summary, the master plan outcomes, the reason why we ended up on that, those two strategies, is that it's really cost-effective. We can surplus those sites that we purchased some time ago and focused on purchasing site, that's one site closest to the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant. You avoid that extensive pipeline down to the South Deschutes and all the staffing and infrastructure that goes with that. It's very adaptable, working with the partner governments of Lot for reclaimed water expansion. The other thing that's kind of cool about expansion of better treatment at the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant is if you look decades in the future, the trend of where water's going is just more and more treatment. And communities are going to the point of just creating a potable end product. And we're not there in our community, but at some point in the future, things are starting to trend there. So by adding better and better treatment at your one facility, it just gets you that much of a step further when our community decides that we would go there. It supports those public values by still treating wastewater as a resource, creating reclaimed water. And it's very flexible. The thing I like about this plan is that we have a lot of options. Regulations change, growth numbers change in different ways, technology changes. We can adapt. And so we're, and I'm here to tell you tonight, by adopting something like this plan, we're in good shape as a community when it comes to wastewater treatment and the level of service that we've gotten used to in our community and that high level of treatment. We'll be in good shape to adapt to the future. So talking to you tonight, but also that community forum I mentioned, we did set a date for that. That's February 27. We'll do a CEPA process as part of this master plan, get that public feedback, modify things, do a write-up, brief the Lot Board of Directors, and then ultimately ask them to adopt this plan. So with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Well, that's probably the most understandable presentation I've seen on Lot. So thank you very, very much. Were you feeling the same way?
No.
Well, maybe it's nine years on council. I get it.
I did my best.
All right. So any question, Councilmember Payne?
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. But I was actually going to say that Google is my friend, and I will be spending a lot of time looking up a lot of the words in the presentation today.
All right. Mayor Potem.
Matt, this may be on the wall of the wet center, but how much of what you're processing comes from toilets? And how much is other sources that go into the waste system?
Yeah, the primary nutrient load is from toilets, you know, your disposal, anything that goes down the drain, you know, that could be...
Showers?
Showers, anything like that. What we're really looking for to do in a wastewater treatment process is you're mimicking nature. You know, if you put that water out into the environment, it needs oxygen to degrade and other, you know, bacteria. So we're kind of mimicking that. So anything that would need that oxygen, but primarily it's from toilets.
So if I could just, I'll just ask, so do you have some rough breakdown of how much is human waste in the water to flush versus other uses for water that go down the drain?
Why do you want to know?
Because I wonder if that's another end. Besides continuing to evolve the biological and UV light and all the cool technologies, at the uphill end, it's still a choice that we're using this device that takes a bunch of water every time we go to the bathroom and sends it down the hill to downtown. And so I just don't know if that's an end. I know we've got, you know, low-flow showerheads. I don't know if you want to hand out if it's yellow, you know, let it mellow signs for everybody to put in their bathroom. And I just, I know it's an awkward topic, but I don't know whether that's really driving the nitrogen load and the volume that comes to the plant, or if other residential and commercial uses make that a small impact on the system.
Yeah, it's a good question. And yeah, the yuck factor is just part of what we do. And so we are not as much now flow limited. So if it takes two flushes to get the same amount of nutrients down to us, it's the nutrients themselves that are driving our process. We very much believe in water conservation, and less we have to pump is the less energy we use is the less carbon footprint that you do. I mean, there's a lot of benefits for less water. But really, the driver is the nutrients are coming to us because of how slow our discharge limits are.
Thank you. That's a real helpful clarification.
All right. I've got Councilmember Partially. Does I see?
Yes, I have a question, even though I've sat through some of this. First, to Mayor Potem, what goes in must come out. And actually, before I ask my question, Lot excels in looking at those products as potential resource generators. And, you know, can we use absolutely everything that comes into the plant to the benefit of our community, recycle, ultimate recycle? And I think that's the philosophy at Lot, if I may say. My question, would you be willing, or the staff, to come back to council and give the climate work that you're doing at Lot and the impact of all of the things you talked about on our actual carbon footprint based on Lot and how you're working with that?
Yeah, we would very much appreciate that opportunity. And thank you for mentioning the beneficial products because it's solid liquid and gas. So the liquid part I talked about would reclaim water. That's drop-for-drop offset of potable supplies. Bio solids are the solid material that comes off of the process that is stabilized and applied as a fertilizer-like product. And then the gas generation, the methane gas that we generate, we produce electricity with that. So yeah, that would be great if we could come back and talk about the full cycle.
And then heat, captured heat.
And we, correct.
Wonderful. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvie. And thank you, Matt, for the clarity. I'll echo that. A very complex topic, and you made it as clear as it could be, I think. Thank you. Kind of just was struck by the amount of reclaimed water that the only public golf course in the region is using. And I wondered if, as part of this study, you looked particularly at, I want to say there's three or maybe even five golf courses in northeast Lacey within a mile of the reclaimed water facility, or of the recharge facility, and whether there was a water policy conversation around golf courses and getting them off of the potable system, even to the point of building their own smaller reclaimed plants. Was any part of that, part of this discovery that you did?
Not, well, to answer your question, yes. A lot of staff conversations as far as what reclaimed water development looks like in Lacey and how it's used. Not down to the level of building new treatment plants for the reasons that I mentioned about operating a decentralized facility. It's just a massive cost just to kind of start that. But as far as some of those golf courses, the way that that Martin Way system works, and in the Hawks Prairie recharge facility, we actually coordinate with City of Lacey staff, and Olympia is involved in these conversations, to maximize the amount of water that goes to the Woodland Creek recharge facility, and just the minimum amount that we can send to the Hawks Prairie infiltration area to kind of keep those wetlands flourishing when they need it. So during the summer months, that Woodland Creek facility pretty much gets everything. So as more connections come to the system and we can upgrade that plant, then a lot of those other offsets come into play. So it's just an iterative conversation with staff. As we can produce more reclaimed water, we will.
Yeah, thank you. I started thinking about local water policy and golf course use. And I'm sorry to latch on to that, but when you talk about lowering your flow, that would be another good alternative. But I appreciate your response.
Right. Holistic look at water supplies is great.
Councilmember Madron.
Earlier this year, you gave a presentation to the Sea Level Rise Group around the flood that we had in January last year, and how all the work that you all did to protect the treatment facility and respond to that. I'm curious how you were impacted by the flood this past December, just, you know, a couple weeks ago, a month ago, and how that ties into this long-term planning process, like more extreme weather events, how that impacts the facilities.
Yeah, thank you for that. So the recent flooding event was well-coordinated with city staff. The impact to us was from the flooding that got into the combined storm and sewers, basically the sewers that float a lot, so the combined storm and sanitary sewers. So when that saline water gets into those catch basins, it flows right to Lot. So that affects the biological process if we get hit with that high salt content. And so what city staff came up with, actually, and we coordinate with them, is putting magnetic mats on the catch basin. So the water, you know, it catches most of it, essentially trapping that water. And when the tide recedes, the mats are removed. And whatever minimal amount of water that's remaining can kind of drain to us. But it's not like we are literally, you know, all Bud Inlets starting to pour in through us and starting to affect our processes. So that's acute, immediate coordination that we do. There was lessons learned. There was like one catch basin that said, oh, yeah, we need to get a mat on that. And we were able to respond. So we're in good shape next time. Long term, when it comes to Sea Level Rise, that map I showed you before cites a wet weather treatment facility across the street, across Franklin. It's a parcel we own right now. And that's just a placeholder for if more intense storms, we need that to respond to take that incoming rush of flow coming in, then we can go ahead and divert that and do a partial treatment, combine that with the total treatment. Everything gets fully treated, but it's a way to kind of take a very dilute product and do that full treatment. So long term, we have plans. That's in addition to the Sea Level Rise collaborative efforts and all the ongoing things there.
Thank you. Magnetic mats. That's new, too. That's so cool. All right. So nice job, and look forward to hearing more about your environmental efforts as well in the future.
Thanks for having me.
Have a nice evening. You bet. We're on to item 6C. Told you we had four other business items. So this one is approval of an ordinance amending Olympia's municipal code regarding regulations of fencing. And so I'm pleased to invite forward Carrie Hornbine, who's a senior planner in our Community Planning and Development Department, to talk about this pending approval of an ordinance.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Sylvie, and good evening, council members. Electric fences may not be exciting, is what you just heard, but I will do my best. So my name's Carrie Hornbine. I'm senior planner with Community Planning and Development. And I'm here this evening to provide you with an overview with some proposed amendments that we received last year to Title 18 of our municipal code, specifically Chapter 1840, which has a number of provisions, including those related to fencing. The application that we received was from a company that specializes in perimeter security systems. It's like a two-fence system. One is electrified. There's an electrified component, and then there's a non-electrified component. I've got some photos to show you how that works. So electric fence, the use of electric fences are established in Chapter 1840 of our code. For years, the use of electric fences has been limited to low voltage. Electric fencing mainly for agricultural purposes or securing animals, but low voltage, meaning somewhere around the range of like 240 to 600 volts is kind of a standard. And so what you see here are some examples of current approaches for securing properties. And some of these are taken at the Auto Mall, which is a group that's really interested in the outcome of this ordinance. But there's photos from the Auto Mall. We have, let's see, those three are from the Auto Mall. This is Ace Hardware. This is the Bobcat Equipment Sales on Pacific Avenue. And here's an example downtown. But we see a lot of this chain link with barbed wire all over town, including out on the Port Peninsula and many, many places. So the proposed amendments, you can see some of the key provisions here. When the application came in, it was pretty broad in scope. It proposed allowing this electric security system in all of our commercial and industrial zones, that the electrified portion could be up to 10 feet in height. The perimeter, the non-electrified portion could be up to five feet in height. And then there are also some provisions that talk about how the fences are energized. They're powered with solar that feeds into a 12-volt DC battery. And the potential voltage could be 7,000 volts for the charging on the electric fencing. And then there are some international standards that the fences would have to comply with. They have to provide emergency access provisions at the entrances because they would close these up at night, and then also providing warning signs for pedestrians to not touch. So I've got two examples here. And I also, I added some features so you could, because it's hard to tell where the electric fencing is. It's kind of hard to see in this situation. So think of it as a series of like wire cables, like they're probably like eight to 12 inches apart. And so they run at equal intervals horizontally. And then here is an example of a solid outer wall that's, in this case, probably five or six feet. This is actually a local example. One of the dealers at the Auto Mall got permission to install one of these systems on the caveat that they wouldn't energize it until these provisions got approved. So it was installed. But instead of allowing the 10 feet that they've been asking for, is that our building division approved eight feet, which is comparable to a six-foot chain link fence with a barbed wire on top. So you see that here. You see the solar panel. You see all the parts that help energize the fencing. And you can actually see the cables better here. And then this is the outer fence to keep people from getting close to it and touching it and possibly getting a good zap. So in terms of process, we received this application earlier last year. We had two planning commission briefings. this application earlier last year. We had two planning commission briefings. There were a number of questions and concerns that we needed to work through. We did issue a SEPA determination, a determination of nonsignificance. And then Planning Commission held a public hearing in August. And after we worked through some of their concerns, they voted to recommend approval, but they made some pretty significant modifications. So because the Auto Mall has been dealing with a lot of issues with theft, vehicles, catalytic converters, and also a lot of property damage and vandalism, there's a lot of interest from that sector of our community. So instead of allowing these outright in all of our commercial and industrial zones, we scaled it back so that we're focusing on auto services, the industrial and light industrial zone districts, because those are the zones that typically have storage yards. They would be allowed on a case-by-case basis though in the other districts. And they would need to demonstrate that there's a need such as like crime reports or, you know, one business on Pacific Avenue I know has had a number of issues, which is Combs RV. They've had a number of break-ins. So they could be a candidate for applying for this on a case-by-case consideration. Just some other things that the Planning Commission's recommendation includes is definition of an outdoor storage yard and specifying that the storage yard had to have been established and is being maintained in conformance with our codes. And that the height would be limited to eight feet. And then also allowing greater flexibility in where these two fences are placed. So you saw some pictures of existing security fencing at the Auto Mall. So rather than having them take the fencing out to meet our setback requirements for fences, the Planning Commission wanted more flexibility. So if there's existing perimeter fences, that those can remain. And then the electric portion would just be placed on the inside. And then also to account for any existing site improvements or landscaping, because a lot of these properties are already developed and have parking lots and curbing and trees and other elements that would be costly and not as effective to have to rip out and then reinstall. So they would also have to go through permitting process, through building permit if the fences are over seven feet in height, some land use review, definitely review by the fire department in terms of access through gates after hours. And then after we got through Planning Commission, their recommendation was to approve. I briefed the Land Use and Environment Committee. And Councilmember Gilman, you had some questions about the effectiveness of these fences. So I did reach out to the applicant and ask for examples so I could call these jurisdictions and hear it directly in terms of how effective are these provisions working. And unfortunately, they did not get me examples of cities where they have been adopted. They have a number of applications in with different cities. And they're all, some of them are waiting to see what Olympia does before they move forward. I know the City of Tacoma's been asking like, let me know what you guys end up doing. As I was reading through, back through the application materials, I did notice that the City of Auburn has actually adopted some similar standards. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get ahold of anybody there before our meeting tonight. And now that we're looking at our climate and equity frameworks, I do, I guess I should probably move on here. In terms of climate, staff doesn't think that this fence system will have a lot of impacts. There may be short-term impacts just for construction, depending on the type of equipment that's used. But because the fences will operate off solar, they're not connected at all to the grid, there, we don't believe that there will be much of an impact. From an equity perspective, it's kind of a two-sided coin here. On the one side, the use of this fencing, for those that choose to install it, it will address issues with theft and property damage. But on the other side, you know, it's complex. Those that steal things and perhaps sell them to pay to cover for just basic living expenses could be negatively impacted. So I just wanted to highlight the frameworks. So those are the comments that I wanted to make this evening, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Payne.
Thank you, Carrie. I just have a question. You mentioned about the pre-existing fences for some of the establishments that already have them in place. Is there a set criteria that needs to be met for that type of fence? Or is it just generally like as long as there is a fence around the electric fence? Because I just want to make sure that they're meeting a standard, if there is one for the fence that's on the outside?
I'm going to go back to the pictures.
Okay.
Okay. So let's look at, let's look at this fence here. This is at the Auto Mall. And it's a chain link fence with slats. And then it also has some barbed wire on top. And so if this property owner were interested in installing the electrified portion on the inside, we wouldn't require them to move this, to remove this fence and to shift it back in to meet our fence setback requirements that are in our code. Those were too limiting for this application. Now, when there are no fences, then they would just need to look, to work around any site improvements, any landscaping that's there, as well as our screening standards and any design standards.
But there's not like a set criteria, like the fence can't have holes in it. It needs to be, you know, a certain amount of feet, that type of thing. The reason I'm asking this is because you'd never know what kinds of crazy situations that people just find themselves in. And then suddenly they're being electrocuted by an electric fence. So I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. And so the outer fence can either be a solid wall, or it could be, it could be a wooden fence. We do have some provisions where if it's near, like a public space, it's got to have a certain amount of transparency, but it wouldn't be enough that somebody could stick their hand through and accidentally touch this fence.
I've got Councilmember, I got Councilmember Cooper followed by Councilmember Partially.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'm struggling with this one a little bit, so I'll ask a few questions. But in particular, allowing installation prior to a policy discussion is a hard one for me to figure out what to do with, to be totally honest. But I'll ask my questions and see where it leads me. I'm struggling with it. So my first one is, if I, as a homeowner, if I want to put in a fence, I think I could put in a six foot, and then there's an extra two foot that I can ask for a variance or a special permit to go to eight. Is that correct?
Can I ask you a question? Would this be around your residence?
Yes.
So this system would not apply in residential?
No, I know. But I'm asking about fence height for residential customers.
So yes, you could.
Six and eight.
Generally six. We do, in your front yard, it's four.
Okay.
But, and we don't grant variances all that often. There has to be a real need to grant a variance up to eight feet.
And is commercial already allowed to go to eight feet without a variance? Or do all of those barbed wire tops already have a special variance permit?
There are provisions that allow those in the code.
Okay, great. I wanted to point out one thing. I have a storage unit at Public Storage on the West Side bordering DOT. And they use what's called actual razor wire, concertina wire, instead of barbed wire. And having crawled in and around both in a prior career, it's highly effective. To me, the equity thing that comes up is all of our neighbors in neighborhood have experienced property crime. And so I think that it's an unfair advantage in some ways for businesses to be able to think about how they secure their property different from me or my neighbors. I get, I get it. I get why they're here and I understand that. What is the process in the determination of nonsignificance for SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act, that looks at the impact on small wildlife? And I may be not understanding electricity, but if a bird lands on it, are they electrocuted or not because they're not grounded? Talk to us about that.
That was the question. That was a question I had early on. So I had to educate myself about how electricity works. And you're correct. If they're not touching the ground, they will not get electrocuted.
Okay.
Now, if there's a, so if there's a bird sitting on the top wire, they're probably okay. But if there's an animal that comes in contact with it at the bottom of it?
Or a squirrel going from a branch to a wire at the same time?
Yeah. And I don't know what 7,000 volts would do to an animal versus a human.
I'm curious about that too, though. I don't know where it lies my vote. Yeah, those are the questions I have. And I really appreciate you answering them. I'm not sure how to vote. So hopefully my colleagues will.
Clarity.
I do appreciate the work of the Planning Commission. They made it stronger. I do want to say that.
All right. Councilmember Partially.
I'm also struggling with this. I think Mayor Protim's question has been on my head. What's the efficacy compared to concertina, what is that, concertina wire and barbed wire compared to electricity? And, you know, I'm a small business owner, so I also look at it in terms of, you know, if you've got constant theft, like for example, an auto lot who's losing all their new catalytic converters, they may choose to go to another place where it's safer. And protecting the ability of these businesses to be here also protects employment. Because 65, 70% of small businesses are, I mean, our employment is 65 to 70% by small businesses. So our people in our community are employed by these folks. So if this is what they think will work, I'm just worried about efficacy. And then, yeah, I've gone through, well, we're going to harm those that have no choice but to steal because of drug addiction, poverty, and everything else. Then in my head, I go to, well, maybe we need to deal with that and work on that and accept that that is a serious problem in our community, which we do. My real question is actually to Land Use. What was your recommendation?
This was a meeting where we only had two members present with additional questions to be answered. And we did recommend to move it out of committee to advance to the full council because there is, there is a business that is waiting on us to make this decision. But we had those, the additional questions that we wanted answered at this meeting. Unfortunately, it sounds like there's not that much information out there. But it was a tentative recommendation out of the committee to be able to discuss it with the full council and more information.
Thank you. I've got Mayor Protim Gilman again.
So just to speak briefly to the questions that I had. First, they were driven by the fact that all of the information that came to us was from one vendor and that we didn't have other local governments or other police departments that we could ask, you know, how does this function? And I know the need is real. You know, we've just, we've added to the water tower something that looks like chain mail to go out in front of the regular chain link fence to make it more vandal proof. So another concern that's not addressed yet, we're talking about 7,000 volts. I'm going to assume that it's like New Zealand sheep fencing, and it's very low amperage, so that it's quite a sting, but it's not an electrocution hazard. But I don't know that for a fact. I just know that there's some math. You take a 12 volt battery and you put it up to 7,000 volts, you have pretty low amperage. But that would have been helpful information to know about what are the human and dog impacts of running into this thing. And then this question of impact or efficacy, I try to balance, we weren't able to find examples with, somebody's going to have to go first if they're going to try it out, right? So anyhow, so I was convinced that there's a need to provide additional security for people keeping items like catalytic converters, you know, in a, in a storage lot. But my concerns were driven that it was, was the entire presentation and all the information we had was from one company who doesn't yet have local installations.
Sure. Councilmember Partially.
I just want to do a follow-up. If this passes, I would, since there's no information on efficacy and some of the health concerns, I would love a follow-up and a monitoring over the next couple of years of whether this is actually a worthwhile ordinance and it's not harming people.
Okay. I've got so much to say. Okay. Councilmember Payne.
Yes, I concur with what Councilmember Partially just said, but also with every, with all the concerns everyone's raised tonight. I'm really struggling with this. And for some reason, I didn't think I would be. So my understanding is that this is the first reading tonight for this, correct? So if we vote for it now, perhaps there are other amendments that could be made to the ordinance?
Always.
Okay. So given that, I will certainly vote yes for it. But I would like to see all of our questions addressed before I vote for it the second time.
So it'll probably come forward in two weeks because we don't meet next week. So maybe we can find some more information in two weeks. Councilmember Madron.
I would just like us to get very clear on what those questions are for staff. Like, for instance, Clark, the questions that you have when this became, came before Land Use, like what has, what hasn't yet been answered? And if people have, because it's just, I just get concerned when we have like these conversations from the dais and like, okay, go answer our questions. And then it's kind, it can be hard for staff sometimes to pick apart what exactly was asked. So if you could just get very clear on what those questions are. And I'll just say that, you know, I have reservations around this as well. But I remember, oh gosh, I don't even remember how long ago, you know, we got a call to the council office from Larson's Automotive around the theft of catalytic converters. And like, what can they do? And they've talked to police and, you know, they're, these are businesses that are really just trying to survive. And we can't provide all the solutions. There's just too much going on. And so I see this as a potential solution that's being brought forward by these businesses that are struggling. And why not let them have that opportunity to try it? I appreciate the thoughts around the monitoring. Olympia's a leader in everything, even electric fencing, you know. But that, I just, I know that we have businesses who are struggling and they're trying to find solutions when we can't provide all of them as a city government. So that's kind of my thinking on it. So if we get clear on those questions and make sure Carrie knows what she needs to do.
And I haven't even spoken yet. I may have a question too. So right now, somebody can get a permit to put a nasty look in barbed wire topping to their chain link fence?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That could do a lot more damage to a human being, I think, than being shocked. Just saying. Right? You don't know?
Don't know.
Well, assuming that electric fencing that's certified for use around people isn't going to kill them or cut them up.
I think one of the concerns is that chain link fences can be cut through. So getting through them is easier. They would just cut through rather than.
So it's just one more deterrent. Cutting through an electric fence would give you another shock?
You know, that I don't know. I don't know if you.
Okay, so maybe.
But through a chain link fence, that happens fairly often.
Yeah.
So that's why there's interest in, from businesses in this system, because it's harder.
Sure.
To get over. To get over the perimeter fence. And then the two are pretty close together, so it's not like they can stand there with lots of room to then try and like.
Negotiate, yeah.
Cut through an electrified cable.
Okay. I, I support this idea because I think it's, it is less, as long as there's proper signage, that this is what's going to, potentially what you're going to feel if you, if you try to scale this fence, that, that this is a better alternative than the razor wire and the barbed wire, certainly. And it's less militarized looking than what those look like. I mean, I remember the armory we got, it had the razor wire all around the edges of, you know, to keep people out from the equipment in there. I just think it's, I think it's a reasonable solution to a really gnarly problem, so. I think we do need a motion. Sure.
Thank you, Ursula. I just want to follow up on that question that, that if you install the electric barrier on the inside, does the barbed wire come off? Because to be totally honest, if I have a pair of rubber handled bolt cutters, I could go through both with the same motion.
It, it would, I think it would be somebody who was really determined, and I suppose it could happen.
But would we keep the barbed wire fence in place if you installed the electric fence? Sorry, I confused two topics there in the same comment.
Yeah, I don't think we would make them modify the, an existing fence.
Okay. Because I, because I agree with the mayor 100%. All chain links should be slatted if it's up, and it should be maintained, and it's often not. So I think those are other side conversations to this policy. I'll just say that I think the comments that were made are reasonable to me in the space that we're in as a city and what these business owners are requesting.
Sure, sure. I also want to add that the, the sense of, is it effective? Is that on us? I mean, if it's not effective, they just spend a load of money on something that doesn't work. Councilmember Madron.
That's kind of the point I was getting at. You know, I, before a motion is made, I just want to make sure that, for one, Carrie is clear on anything that, any homework before the next, before the second reading. But we also, we had somebody in public comment who offered to answer questions if we weren't able to get the answers from the dais. So I just, I just want to remind us of that. I know it's not standard to pull somebody from the Zoom screen and.
I'm sure they're in bed by now, but.
I don't know. They might still be around, but that did occur earlier. I just wanted to.
Right, right. So you've got a resource that you know how to contact.
Right, right.
Okay.
Let me also just mention that, as I was looking through the ordinance one more time, we do have a, an incorrect code reference, which when it comes back for a second reading, I'll make sure that's corrected.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thanks. So, so to clarify, the, the two questions that I would like to have information, I think we sort of distilled through our conversation back and forth, is what is the, the health impact of getting a shock from this fence? Sounds, we don't, we don't know about that. And then the, my, my question, I was hoping another jurisdiction or another law enforcement agency might have, is how easily defeated is this? Which gets to Councilmember Cooper. So it's, it's, it's a question, that's, that's the efficacy question, is how easily defeated? And the reason I think it's, it's, it's both, you know, each business's own business, how they want to secure themselves. But if we're creating a special ordinance for one company who hasn't done any installations around here, that's different to me than allowing some general practice. I, I, I don't, I don't want to facilitate something that we don't have some understanding of both the efficacy and the safety of the product.
Councilmember Madron.
Can, can we check to see, because it sounds like one of those questions we need to talk to other jurisdictions, but one we might be able to get an answer to right now if this guy is still on. Can we, can we check to see if?
Kelly, do you want to see if he's still in the audience?
Because, because if we can have that information tonight and like, I'll be digesting it, then I think that would be helpful.
All for efficiency.
He's still online.
All right. Do you want to see if he's available? He's probably been sending notes through Zoom. I'm here! I can send him over if you like.
Yeah, let's do it.
He's traveling.
And I still have his name.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Pate.
Thanks for asking me in. Okay, I can answer all of your questions. And I'll take them one at a time if you'd like to give them to me one more time.
All right. And for, for the record, can you give us your name and the company you work for?
My name is Michael Pate. I'm Director of Government Affairs with Amoroc, and we initiated this amendment to the code.
All right, thank you for that. I will start with, how about Mayor Protem Gilman?
Thank you for joining us tonight, Michael. The first question, we had different ideas, but no real information about what the, what the impact is of being shocked by this, this particular configuration, the voltage and amperage.
Okay. It's, it's very simple. If you're in your stocking feet, rubbing your feet across a carpet, reach out and touch your door handle, that's a 15,000 to 20,000 volt static shock. That is very similar to what we do. So you're going to feel it. It's going to pop you pretty good, but it's really not going to hurt you. You just don't want to do it again. I don't know many people who, over and over again, rub their feet across the carpet and reach out to the door handle and achieve a static shock. So that's basically the feel of what it is. It's safe, it's reliable, it's tested to a standard, the International Electric Technical Standard, as well as the ANSI, American National Standards Institute Standard, which makes it a safe and reliable product. It's not going to hurt anybody, a bird or an animal or anything like that.
Thank you, sir. So it's, it's safe to say that it's a very low amperage charge, even though it's high voltage?
No, that's not true at all.
That's not true.
It actually has a high amperage.
Okay.
But the reason it's safe is because it is a pulsed electrical device. In other words, the electricity is not flowing all the time. It basically loads an energizer. Once that energizer is loaded, it releases that energy down the interior line in three ten thousandths of a second. So that's the, that's the time that that energy is on the line. So because it's such a quick pulse, that's what makes it safe. So it's a pulsed energy device, not a continuous flow device like you get out of your socket in your home.
Thank you. And my, my second question, Mr. Pate, was about how difficult it is to defeat this fence, given that we have, it's organized crime now, not individuals. It's people who come with a van to take catalytic converters, have cordless power tools, and are in and out pretty quickly. How would this defeat those folks coming through who've been going through the chain link fence?
Well, most people cannot defeat. And if they can, which can happen, we're not perfect. Just like any other device in the world, we're not perfect. But if the device is defeated, it sets off an alarm. If the pulse does not go through the line back to the alarm panel, we set an alarm off. We are actually in alarm. So if we get five consecutive negative returns back to the alarm panel, we set the alarm off audibly on the site and back to our alarm facility. We go through a call list. So we would go through our call list. We can't get number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, we keep going. Usually we have four or five folks on the list. Usually we can get probably the number one or two. And we, you know, tell them that something's going on out there. We also have cameras that are associated with this device. So once we go through the call list, they can look up, check out the specific fence line, the northern fence line, for an example, and say, hey, there's a break 220 feet in the northeast corner, let's give it a look. We had a big snowstorm knocked out the, the big tree on the corner, took the fence line out. Let's button it up and go back to bed. Or, hey, there are five guys out there with a flatbed truck, cut a hole in our fence. They're robbing us blind. Please call the local police department. That's a verified alarm. So they know where to go, what to expect. But in most cases, probably 95 to 98% of cases, we do not have breaches when this device is installed.
Thank you. That's helpful, and I'll yield to other council members' questions. Thank you, sir.
Did you have one? Anybody down this side? Okay, anyone on this side? Okay. We really appreciate you staying on the line with us this evening. And I can't hear you.
I was just saying, nice summary to the Mayor Protem. Thanks for catching the question.
Yes, he captured all of our concerns. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You bet. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? Councilmember Madron.
I can do it. I move to approve an ordinance adopting amendments to Chapter 1840 of the Olympia Municipal Code to allow the use of electric security fencing around storage yards within commercial and industrial zone districts.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for your patience to Carrie and all your work on this with, through the planning commission and the Landuse. Okay, that brings us, she has something? Okay. That brings us to item 6D this evening. And that is approval of our lodging tax advisory committee's tax funding, lodging tax funding recommendations. And this has been a, an item of great concern and interest to our community. And I want, just for the record, let people know that I am chair of this committee, representing the council. And Mike Reed, our Economic Development Director, is our staff liaison, and he's going to take us through this slide deck and explain some potential directions we can go.
Excellent. Well, good evening, councilman. Again, for the record, I'm Mike Reed. I'm your Economic Development Director. So here we go. So a lot of legalese here to start right off the bat. But this is what you can use your lodging tax funds for. So just as a little bit of a tiny primer, your lodging tax is generated when there is an overnight stay in a hotel in Olympia. And the intention of that lodging tax is so that it can become sort of self-replicating, so that you hold, you use those funds to hold events and support tourism-related facilities so that more people can stay in those beds and create more lodging tax. And it keeps feeding the system and supporting our hospitality industry and our events that we have here. You can use it obviously for tourism marketing, marketing and operations of special events, operations and capital expenditures of tourism-related facilities owned and operated by a municipality. You can use it, fourth bullet there, operations of tourism-related facilities owned or operated by a nonprofit. And finally, there's a fifth bullet there, which is a new one I will get into a little bit later. But MRSC, a municipal research service center, has reached the conclusion, has given the advice that you can use the lodging tax funds for supporting the staffing requirements necessary to operate your lodging tax program. We have not utilized that, so that's coming for, before you this evening as well. The members of your lodging tax advisory committee are, as mentioned, Mayor Selby, Annette Pitts, who is the Executive Director of the Experience Olympia and Beyond, Terry Thorning, who is the Director of the Olympic Air Show. And then we've got Janine Phillips, the GM of Hampton Inn and Suites, and Don Olay, or Oli, the GM of the Olympia Hotel at Capital Lake. This is a unique committee for us in that there are requirements per RCW about what our committee makeup is. We are required to have an equal number of both lodging tax generators, hospitality industries, and lodging tax users, or events, or people that would use those funds. So we have two and two, and then we also have an elected official on the board. That is required by RCW, that we have that. Both of those hotels, I should also mention, are inside the city limits of the, of the city of Olympia. Our lodging tax application launched on August 30th, 2022. We then actually had a couple of our existing lodging tax advisory committee members relocate professionally. And so we were, we, we lost both of our hospitality representatives after we had already launched the application. So we did a pause. We allowed for the applicants to use that time to better inform their application process while we went out and recruited the replacements. So that actually allowed the respondents all the way until October 24th to respond. And we met as a lodging tax advisory committee on November 19th, reviewed all of those applications. It was a very long meeting. Thank you for staying through that. We had 25 submitted applications. That is an increase significantly over the previous year high. Previous year was 19 applications, this year 25. So it is a growing program. I also do think that the extended period of application did lead to more responses and interest in the program. As a part of all of our staff reports going forward, you've seen this year, and as you saw in the previous presentation, we do include an equity and climate framework. And so in the staff report, you would have seen that I did provide some commentary on that. One of the things that is called out in that item, it's called out under the equity framework, is that we have a need to update our policy guidance associated with the lodging tax advisory committee and lodging tax program. We did discuss this briefly at your, as one of the potential priorities at the council retreat. But really what we were seeing is the, the last time that really we got into the policy guidance associated with the lodging tax program was in 2007. So now it's time to do that. Couple of things that I think need to be done is to incorporate some priority setting. If we're getting 25 applications, how do we streamline that process? The best way to do that is have clarity associated with your priority setting process. We do have a reserve balance associated with our lodging tax. We do not have clarity on a reserve balance policy. How much do you want to have? When do you want to use it? How much should we be setting aside each year? It's pretty quiet in our existing policy concerning that. Additionally, the inclusion of equity and climate frameworks into the select, into the selection criteria and application process. There's 25 applications that came in. I did not have the bandwidth myself to be able to go through every single one of those and create an analysis. That would have been 50 total analysis done. Put that work on the applicants, teach them how to do that work and provide that as part of the application process so that we can be better informed as we're making our decisions. I will say on that one, what I, what I think would be necessary would be that commission, or the council, request the Social Justice and Equity Commission for participation in a process like that. Best get that done. And then finally, I think that we could use some improvements on our solicitation and practices to increase opportunities. I think that the extended period showed that if you give a little bit more time for response, you give more applications, more applications give us an opportunity to do more and better things with the program. So for total funding, we estimate that we have, we will generate $520,000 in new lodging tax funds in the year of 2023. We are actually going into this year with a reserve balance of $647,000. Of, if we totaled up all 25 applications, we would have had a total application amount of $985,990. The lodging tax advisory committee did recommend providing funding to all 25 applicants, but not at the full amount that they all requested. So the total did come in at $805,490. So before you tonight, there's a couple of things that you can do with the action that is in front of you. I want to call out, I got this information again from the Municipal Research Service Center, which is a resource that we staff use pretty frequently to give us guidance on, on policy decisions and actions. You may choose only recipients from the list of candidates and the recommended amounts provided by the lodging tax advisory committee. What that's saying is you can't add new stuff right now. So they, every, everything that you're going to award to has to at least have gone to the lodging tax advisory committee, and then they bring forward. In that second bullet there, the legislative body is not required to fund the full list of recommended recipients. So it is not a, you do not have to take an action that is a yea or nay on the full slate that is in front of you. The, the, you may choose to make awards to only some, or even none of the recommended recipients, but the legislative body may not awards to any, may not award funds to any recipient that was not recommended to LTAC. Couple of things I also want to note on this. All of the awards that we do, they are required to enter into a contract with the city of Olympia. That contract, we create a scope of work for that contract. That scope of work has to be consistent with their proposal that they made, and it was awarded. And then the funds are reimbursed. So, it is not, we, when we issue the contract, here's your contract and here's your fifty thousand dollars. It is a reimbursable. So, after they have spent it in accordance with their contract, we will reimburse that expense. They also need to go through, if their event requires a special event permit, or any kind of permit to hold, they have to go through that permit first. So, a lot of events, things that require street closures, for example, they still have to go through the special event permit process, be awarded the permit, hold their event, and then submit the, for reimbursement to us. So, as I mentioned, there are twenty-five in front of you this evening. There are, there are a handful of new, obviously with twenty-five, that we had not seen before. But two that I felt very, I thought was very important to, to, to call out to you tonight, because they are quite new for us, is there is a request for twenty-six thousand dollars to be utilized to support staffing for this program. At this continued growth, adding new layers to this. Also, this year, looking at a policy update and analysis, we're going to need assistance to be able to do that. The intention is to pair this position with our cultural access programming staff, and that staff person that would be supporting, supporting the cultural access program would also be related to this. I think that there's a real powerful synergy on those two programs to be able to work together. The one below it, too, is for a geo-fencing program. Geo-fencing is a mechanism of tracking visitor data in a, in a confined area. One of the things that we really struggle with is understanding the impact of funding. Because it's not, we're not talking about our residents. We can do demographic data on the resident makeup of Olympia. I don't know always where the tourists may be coming from, how, especially if it's a free event. If it's not a ticketed event, we don't know how many people showed up, how long they stayed, where they came from. Geo-fencing is a tool that can help us understand some of the, the, the impacts of the, of the events that are being held. I also think that providing that information back to those awardees gives them the opportunity to fine-tune some of their proposals year over year. We also have to report to the state about the, how the lodging taxes are used. And I think that this would help in that. You'll also see another new one, for example, the Olympia Soccer Foundation supporting the Olympia, the Ole Town Artisans. They do bring in visitors from out of area, sometimes for the other teams that they're playing, but new, new proposal there. The Thurston Climate Action Team is wanting to put on the South Sound Climate Conference. This would be one of the first times that they'd be bringing this back. So, what you, what you see down here is a total. That's, you saw the nine eighty-five, that's the totaled amount that came in. The eight oh five is the recommended amount. And you can see what that ultimately does to our fund balances, depending upon how we opted to award funds. So, that's the, that's the extent of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Certainly. Let's start with questions regarding the actual program, and then I know there's other concerns. Council, councilwoman from Madron.
I have a question. I just see that there's, I think, just two that are sig, that are getting significantly less funding than what they asked for. And I'm curious, was it a part of the application of like, do you have other sources of fund? Is your, is, is your event still feasible if you don't get full funding? So, I'm, I'm curious, like, and I'm looking at Thurston Climate Action Team and Thurston County Chamber, the, the conference and the Brew Fest. And they both just got way less than they asked for, and they, they're kind of outliers. So, I'm just kind of curious about that one.
Sure. The, the discussion on, on both of those, the, well, the first one with the Climate Action Team, sixty-eighth.
I just remembered that their only budget was from us.
Yeah, so that, they wanted the full funding for the entirety of the conference to come from lodging tax. So, one of the questions that we ask is, what will it take to execute your event? And then, how much are you asking, and what is the percentage of what you're asking for is the event? Theirs was, it costs sixty-eight thousand dollars to put this on, this event on, so we're asking for a hundred percent of the funding.
Gotcha.
And so, that was, I think that that's where that one came in. And there was some conversation about what made sense to fund. So, there was even a discussion when developing the scope of work, pulling out from what they had provided to us, the necessary funds to secure a venue, do promotional and marketing for the event. And then they would need to do their sort of staffing and so on and so forth for the other components. On the Thurston County Chamber Brew Fest, I think it was, this event has existed before. I don't know if they felt that there was a clear articulation in the application what getting an additional amount of funding for an event that has occurred numerous times already without any funding, what, what that did. So, it was, I think, the idea of, hey, this, hopefully, five thousand will work. And if it doesn't, come, come back next year. So.
We've got councilmember Partially, followed by councilmember Cooper.
So, I was sort of intrigued by your conversation about the reserve and the policy. I, you know, normally reserves, when you set the amount, it has to do with the budget and running of whatever blank. The, and being able to maintain it in the case of an emergency. Do you have any idea what that amount would be? Because, you know, I see on here, the Experience Olympia and Beyond, I suspect that's going to be a yearly contribution to the vacation tourism group. You know, would that be a consideration in, in part of what the total reserves are? Because what if next year, you know, we need to pay that, and we haven't gotten a tax like a pandemic?
Yeah, that's a great question. We have not reached the conclusion on what that amount should be. But one of the interesting things that we do have is we have a basis of comparison like we have never had before. We shut down hospitality in two thousand twenty. I think that that's probably the low point that we could look back at as to what amount gets generated. And so, I think that that's our, our, gives us sort of that, that watershed of understanding, what are the side, side roads here? We're continuing to see lodging tax, before COVID, it was growing. There's new hotels that are being built. There's more activity that's occurring. So, we were seeing it on a really sort of nice uptick. COVID just bottomed it out. I, I, I think that we could, we could make some estimates as to what would be needed to maintain a sort of healthy place. The other thing, prior to COVID, there was just a little bit, it felt like an arbitrary decision of every year, we would ju, we would award eighty percent of the estimated lodging tax funds that we would receive, and we would put twenty into reserve. I don't know, I wasn't working with the program at the time. I don't know ultimately how that eighty-twenty split occurred. It's a good thing we had it during COVID. It's lasted us to a point where, two years removed, we still have six hundred thousand dollars in reserves. The other thing that also happens is when, when a, when you award an event funding, and they, let's say the event gets canceled, those funds just go right back into the reserve balance. So, not only are you growing at that twenty, were we growing at that twenty percent, any canceled event, or an event that didn't meet its reimbursement criteria, that all, this got carried over. And so, it grew over time.
So, I just follow up. In a reserve, if you set a reserve, let's just say, you know, for climate, we wanted to put ten million dollars in there. In theory, if we had a fund or revenue stream, each year, as long as that ten million was capped, you could spend all of the revenue stream, as long as you're paying for staff and everything else. Is that the kind of reserve that you're looking at, set it, and then pay for staff?
This is why we're sending it to finance to discuss all this stuff.
Okay, so I'll stop then, because I have lots of questions when you come to finance.
We have not made the, a recommendation to that degree of detail at this point.
Yeah, that's why it needs a referral. Yeah, I just like, we don't have those answers. That's why you guys need to, to look at it for us. Uh, councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Ms. Selby. And finance is a meeting tomorrow night, and I wouldn't be surprised if it's in our work plan without a referral. So, there you go. I, I wanted to, I, I think also lift up that if we hadn't had that balance, it's likely that our theaters would have had a much harder go in the situation they were in. And so, it's really important to think about, in a, in a deliberate conversation at the committee level, what that, what that number should be. Mike, I got a question about just one applicant. I'm wondering if you can tell me more about Team Tomorrow.
Yes.
I've never heard of that, and when I go to the South Sound Block Party page, I don't find the level of transparency that all of these other nonprofits have facing the public. And I need to know more before I can vote on that one.
Yeah, Team Tomorrow is the same entity that, that worked on the South Sound Block Party last year. And they also paired with a local nonprofit, the For the Love Organization. So, they are effectively an event planner organization.
So, this is a, this is the one for-profit company on the, on the list?
This is. And what we did last year, because we do have a, in the policy that we have, and in their application, they do have a relationship with a nonprofit. So, I just captured For the, the, the Team Tomorrow is the name on the sheet. The application has both names.
Thank you. Yeah, that's really helpful. I think, and I, and I think I, I lift that, that up as an example of why priority setting conversation is important. Like, what do we expect? What are the parameters? Who we will fund? You know, what our priorities are? Because that's not what the rest of these applicants are telling the community. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to nitpick this, because half of the appointees on the committee were new. And this is a lot of work just to get through this. And, and I probably having, but if I were new sitting there, I would have done a similar thing, spreading the money to everyone, because you couldn't choose who wouldn't get funded in that short amount of time, even though we know there's too many on the list at this point now.
It was a five-hour meeting.
Yeah, I told, I totally, totally understand that. And so, for that reason, I'm not, I'm not going to try to pull it apart beyond. Well, I'm not sure if I should go to the next question or not.
I, I think we're ready to move on to the elephant in the room.
Okay. So, I, I, I'm supportive of this package, but I, I believe there's a conversation to be had with Capital Lake Fair as a city before we make that decision. But I, I know others have talked about that that know more than me. And just like to hear what maybe the mayor or, or staff's thinking is on that piece.
Well, what, what I can say is that we are well aware of what boiled up last week and became very clear to us that we needed to have a very serious conversation about city values in regards to how we disperse grant funds, specifically LTAC funds. And I am speaking about the Capital Lake Fair organization. And, you know, as many of you are aware, surrounding the selection process for this year's Lake Fair Court, there, there has just been a real disconnect between where we feel we are in our mission, vision, and values, and where this organizations are. I, I just wanted to say that all of us up here have served as volunteers, either on boards or at, at events. And we understand the stress that's been put, and is put, on nonprofit organizations to survive. But what is very incomprehensible for me, now I'm speaking for me, is that an organization that has capital in its name could have drifted so far away from the capital city's values regarding equity and belonging. It was with actual disbelief that I read what happened with the selection process. And I understand there's a lot we don't know. There's always two sides. We've been talking with people, former board members, current board members, people that were on the board until they resigned this week, to try to get to the bottom of this. And we're not there yet. But what I can say with some pretty good confidence is that we are not going to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars to Lake Fair this evening. What I am going to propose, and then I'll open it up for further discussion, is that we forward a request to our Social Justice and Equity Commission to provide advice and recommendations on how to incorporate equity, and, and Mike touched on this, in future allocations from our lodging tax. I'm advocating that we add that to the Community Livability and Public Safety Work Plan, but I'm sure if it belongs in finance, but I think the Social Justice and Equity Commission reports to us. So, I feel like that portion of this discussion needs to go into Community Livability and Public Work, Public Safety Work Plan. The other part of this proposal is that I am offering, along with our city manager Jay Burney and our diversity, equity, inclusion manager Toby Hill Meyer, to meet, oh, and also add a liaison from the Social Justice and Equity Commission, to meet with the Board of Capital Lake Fair. We want to have a conversation with the Board to gauge their interest, their willingness and commitment to create an event that preserves what we love about Lake Fair, but also reflects the values of our community, of being welcome and inclusive. I don't think they're, they're there now. I also just want to recognize, this is a beloved event. Sixty, seventy years of, of, you know, experiences that they've created for our community members and for the region. And that nostalgia for an old-time carnival and fireworks show and a parade is, is there. We, we don't want it to go away. And as well, it's a major fundraising event for so many nonprofits in our community. It's, for some of them, it's their only event that sustains them. So, that's a consideration. You know, we also need to look at, as a city, what we underwrite as far as our public safety staff that we provide to that event. You know, we, we provide a lot of officers, and we incur a lot of those costs ourselves. But future goodwill for, Lake Fair Events needs to be earned. And I, it goes without saying, maybe, no, it just needs to be said, that I don't want what we're talking about tonight to reflect on the other applicants from the other high schools. They are innocent bystanders in all this. I don't want their, their experiences of being in the Lake Fair Court to be, to have a shadow over it because of this. You know, it's so unfortunate all around. And I, I know in this letter, I, I hear the words, but I, I still think there's not what we need. I'm, I'm starting to go in circles. What we need to be able to allocate the money. So, I'm offering to meet with your group, with some city staff, and, and talk about a path forward. But we cannot make a commitment to funding Lake Fair this year at this point. I'm going to open it up for any other comments. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that when the Social Justice and Equity Commission was formed, one of the things that they wanted to be a part of their scope of work is helping the city decide how to respond when active discrimination occurs. So, I know they might not have bandwidth, but it might be good to have an invitation to have them send a representative to whatever meeting occurs. And I just, I just want to reiterate what I said at the, the start of the meeting, that, you know, it, the, the response from the Capital Lake Fair organization has just been wholly inadequate in this. And even in this, this letter that was sent to us tonight, there's, there's, there's no acknowledgement of harm done. And there's been harm done to a particular person, but also an entire community. And so, you know, like I said before, I, I look forward to seeing what else comes from the Lake Fair organization. I, I agree with the mayor that I think, you know, I, I, I've actually been quite saddened by this whole event. But I've also seen people like dragging on Lake Fair separate from all of this. And there's a lot of people in here that, in, in our community and surrounding communities who actually really do value Lake Fair. And so, that's made me feeling sad, too. Like, you know, if it's not, if it's not your cup, cup of tea, you don't have to go. But, but I, I, I also just want to acknowledge that, that there's, there are a lot of people that really do value Lake Fair, and we want to see, we, we want to see you succeed. We really do. But, but this, this letter falls short, the, the response from the organization falls short. And, and I, I, I know that, I know that we can all do better around this. So, thank you for being here.
Councilmember Partially.
Just to go, thank you, councilmember Madron, and to do another.
And to do another, um, thing about the Social Justice and Equity Commission is that they also stated they want to help educate and allow people to improve on their processes for equity and diversity. So it kind of goes with both of those things. And so I, I really support you meeting with Toby and a member of our social justice. I think that's an excellent way to start. Because I can't right now honestly support Capitol Lake Fair, and it's very sad for this grant, unless and until they do an equity evaluation and a policy update that prevents this from happening in the future. I think as we've learned on the equity health and the moment for racial healing, we also have to acknowledge, as Councilmember Madron said, the harm done. Because it's not just to this student, it's to a whole school and a whole community. And, and that school is impacted as much as this student that they elected. So I think we need to make sure that that's acknowledged and owned in a very open and heartfelt way. Because I think that's how we get through this. We can take it as a learning moment and become better. And that's how we have to handle these kinds of situations. We can be better because I agree, Lake Fair is precious to a lot of people. It's a lot of history, a lot of feeling. And we, we can make this even a better fair if we take the right attitude towards this. Um, unbeknownst to me, in the conversations that we were going to have the Social Justice and Equity review this, uh, policy for LTAC, absolutely 100% agree. And, um, I have spoken with Councilmember Payne, who, no, I guess I haven't. Councilmember Huen is now the chair. Excuse me. I will be speaking with her about, um, I've asked the Finance Committee to tackle not only LTAC, but the policies for all grants from the city. We've done a very good job on equity and climate for a lot of our actions, but we have not actually reviewed how we give out grants and how the people seeking those grants fulfill our values, core values that we have stated either through master plans or policies or resolutions or proclamations.
Thank you. Next I have Mayor Protam Gilman.
Thank you. At first, I just wanted to clarify for those of you who are not on Facebook.
Yeah, I didn't, I assumed everybody knew.
So, um, the, the issue is that, um, each of the regional high schools forwards a student to be considered for the Lake Fair Court each year. And Black Hills High School selected a student who was part of a disability community through an intellectual disability. And they crowned her at their Winter Sports Assembly. And she and her mother worked for several days on an essay that I found really beautiful. And they received a phone call that said, um, we're, we're going to screen you out ahead of the interviews. And, and that led to a lot of discussion, mostly on social media over the weekend. And so I just, I want to read a couple of lines from her essay that she said, "I am a person with disabilities, but I don't let my disability stop me from doing whatever I put my mind to. Many people look at people with disabilities and think of it as a problem, but for me, I don't see it that way." Even if you have a disability, you're still human, you're still alive, you still have feelings, can live your life and do things as you want, but sometimes you might need more help with what you want to do. And, and I just want to close by saying in a conversation with her mother this afternoon, she said that Abigail is looking for a silver lining in all of this. And she may be a bigger person than the rest of us. Thanks.
Well said. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Payne, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protam, for that context and to my councilmates for your words. I love Capitol Lake Fair. Uh, my family and I go every year. It was sad to see it go away during COVID. But when you love something, that means sometimes you have to call it out and say when things are not right. And, um, this is a huge, huge misstep for Capitol Lake Fair. It's sending a message to everyone in this community who is disabled, who is perhaps abled, but of a, a different, uh, demographic even. I, I'm not here to tell Capitol Lake Fair what to do. Um, but I do just want to call some things out, like from this letter uh, that, that Councilmember Madron mentions, that there isn't a lack of accountability, a lack of, an apology to Abigail and her family and to the community. And there is, you know, if I, I'm looking at the logo for Capitol Lake Fair here, and it says rooted in tradition. Uh, and sometimes words like that sends subconscious or implicit messages to us about certain things. And so how can we move to a place of actual change if we are doing things that are rooted in tradition? And we're not going to change because that's how it is? And so, you know, I, I, I just, frankly, it seems like it speaks to a mindset, uh, and this is why we're here. You know, I understand that it's speaking to it in the sense that it's existed since the 1950s. And, uh, but I can tell you as a black man, I certainly don't want to be rooted in it, in a tradition from the 1950s. Uh, that doesn't mean anything to me, uh, except something that's very deeply hurtful perhaps. Uh, and so this is an opportunity for Capitol Lake Fair to think about, um, what do they value? Um, and, and do they share the same values as the City of Olympia? It, it's very unfortunate to see that we're here, but I do see this as a learning opportunity. And I would just ask the community, uh, you know, as my council member or councilmate, uh, Councilmember Madron said, is to not drag Capitol Lake Fair so negatively. Sometimes that's met with a lot of resistance and then we don't see the change that we're, we're all hoping to see. So I, I would just hope for everybody to be patient. I agree with the actions that the mayor has mentioned earlier, and, and hopefully something positive will come out of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
I got to stop going behind Councilmember Payne. Thank you for your words. I know it's funny. I agree with my colleagues. And I also want to just say thank you to Abigail and her family for telling the story because we're learning and we're hurting with you. I think the whole community, and I would say, I would guess with the out, out exception, including all of the individuals involved in the Lake Fair Organization, are trying to figure out what this means right now. And honestly, our real charge is how to make sure that every time we do business with an organization, we have an understanding of the values. And I have to say, in, in the nonprofit world, there's a lot of folks trying to figure that out right now. And it's the most difficult question in front of us. You know, particularly in, in philanthropy, the folks giving out money. So it's challenging and it's hard, but I hope that the Lake Fair Organization will rise to the occasion. You know, there's a lot more to be told about the story as time goes on. But, um, just thanks to that family for being willing to tell the story. And thanks to all the community members who got it out there so that we can, we can move forward productively as the mayor has proposed. So if the mayor's okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Absolutely. Is that the motion you were?
That's sort of what I was going to do, but.
You could maybe tailor it to what she's recommending to.
I move to approve the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations, except for Capitol Lake Fair.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
And then before I make another motion, mayor, I was a little unclear if you were asking for this to go back to LTAC for further review or really just wanting to have that meeting and then make a recommendation back to the city council.
That's just a kind of consensus that we do that. Okay. All right. That concludes our regular, oh, no, we've got reports. Sorry. You guys after 9:30. So mayor's report is only that we will not have a business meeting next Tuesday night. Or, uh, we will gather together in two weeks and public comment will be available then. And I will go to my right. Councilmember Madron.
Um, I've got a couple of items to report. Um, Transportation Policy Board. I will say that Mayor Andy Ryder of Lacey has been successful in finally changing the time of the Transportation Policy Board. Rather than meeting at 7:00 AM on Wednesdays, we will now meet at 7:30 AM on Wednesdays. Which was a compromise because some of us, um, you know, work during the day. And so, um, you know, not everybody was even pleased with that change, but it's incremental, right? Um, a couple of other things from that, just, just, just a couple of things that I think that you all would want to be aware of. Um, the, um, uh, TPB is in the process of updating the regional transportation plan. Um, we, uh, made the action in our comprehensive plan last year to remove the log cabin road and instead, uh, replace that with language around a connectivity study. And so, um, that has, um, that amendment has gone to TRPC. There were concerns from folks at the Transportation Policy Board, um, around, um, around the, you know, how long that project's been around, how some parts of that road have been built, um, you know, how it impacts the region. Um, and I assured them that, um, that, uh, our, what, what we, the action that we took is, you know, we're still going to do the connectivity study that would have been required. Uh, the, what we did was we removed the definitive outcome of needing that connecting road. Um, and one of the reasons for doing that is that with our climate mitigation plan, you know, if we are able to reduce vehicle miles traveled, maybe we don't need it in the future. But we're still going to proceed with that connectivity study, um, on, on, on the timeline that we would have done it anyway. And so they were satisfied with that. And also just one thing to note, just, um, legislative wise in the, um, transportation arena is that the governor's budget, um, has pushed out, um, geez, has pushed out timing for, um, uh, work on I-5 past six years. Um, and that's kind of a problem for our region because they're already going through NEPA and SEPA stuff. And if that funding comes in too late, we're going to have to do NEPA and SEPA all over again. So FYI, it's something that they're tracking at TRPC. Regional Housing Council also met. Um, we discussed a potential project. It's called a Land Sale Point Apartments. It would be 162 units, 60% IAMI or less for 40 years. This would be done, um, uh, by, uh, the developer, um, is hoping to get the low-income housing tax credit, um, but needs a 5% local match, which can come in the form of a loan. Um, on our side in Olympia, we're looking at using some of our home fund dollars to be able to loan out half that amount. And, um, the, uh, the request has been put in front of the RHC to, um, get the other half, uh, from county home fund dollars to, uh, move that forward. There are some concerns because we are in the process of creating a process. And, uh, so there will be more conversation about it in a couple of weeks. It's, it's a project that, um, I'm personally excited about. I hope we can find a way to, uh, to move it forward. But, you know, there's also concerns around, you know, what does a reasonable process look like? And like, you know, are we getting ahead of this process? We're in the process of designing by, you know, um, loaning funds out, um, ahead of that. So more conversation to be had there. Um, and also just, just something for us to be aware of is that, um, document recording fees are going to be much lower, which means less, uh, revenue for, um, uh, homeless services, for affordable housing. Also, one final thing, um, the inter-local agreement is going to be worked on again. Uh, we approved the one for the Countywide Home Fund that put in a 90-day timeline for us to also do the ILA for the Regional Housing Council to incorporate the home fund. Another thing that we're looking at doing while, while the, the ILA is open is, um, our $14.06 currently, the Regional Housing Council makes a recommendation. It then goes to all the jurisdictions to approve at the council level, and then it goes to the county. So we're trying to take out that middle step, um, by changing the ILA to say, okay, the Regional Housing Council can make a recommendation on $14.06, and then the county, and then it goes to the county. So, um, so just a heads up, that'll be coming our way. That's all I got.
I have a question from Councilmember Partially.
I, I think I was trying to figure out, um, I missed something because I was trying to figure out if it was traffic or transportation. That, I'm just kidding. My, I, what I missed was, um, where is this housing development going to be in the region?
It is on, I forget the name of the road. It's over by the East Side Olympia Food Co-op. It's very close to a grocery store to transit, uh, but it's over in the east side, over in that area over there. It's like Burr Road or something like that.
Okay, that's property that's been on, that's been, yes, okay. Familiar, we're familiar with that property. Um, Councilmember Payne.
Um, yes, just a couple of things really quickly. Um, so last Monday, uh, we had our, our monthly, uh, Council of Neighborhood Associations meeting. And in, in that meeting, they received a, a presentation on Olympia Strong, and, and where we are in this process, in the process and, and things like that. And, uh, there was, uh, quite a few questions, um, in regards to, or questions and concerns in regards to the, uh, Triangle Subarea Plan for the west side. There seems to be, uh, some concerns, uh, around displacement that were mentioned, uh, a few times. Uh, I actually, uh, received a, a great briefing from, uh, Community Planning and Development earlier this week on that. But, uh, I just kind of wanted to share that, um, you know, there are some concerns around, uh, how things are developing in terms of the specifics, uh, and the plans for, for, uh, increased housing in the area specifically. So, um, and also, um, they also held their elections, which, uh, we skedaddle for. So, um, I'll be back to you with an update on that. Um, and I also just want to give the mayor a shout out for the wonderful, uh, State of the Community address that she, uh, gave, uh, last week, uh, at the Thurston Chamber State of the Community Event. And, um, it, I know it was your last address and it was an emotional moment, uh, for you. And, and, but she received great accolades from, uh, leaders i- in the room, as you should. So, uh, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Gilman.
Yes, just, uh, two items. The, um, Thurston Regional Planning Council met Friday morning just after the Transportation Policy Board and did approve the amendments to the regional transportation plan, which the one substantive amendment was to remove the log cabin road extension from the list of projects. But we understood that in its place is a future transportation study for that corridor. So that's, that's how it was explained. And the other thing we did was to, um, to have a quiz show game about, about the Thurston County Profile. Thurston Regional Planning Council on their website maintains a whole lot of statistics and demographic information about our community and about the county. And, um, they, they packaged it up into a quiz show to test our knowledge. And it was, it was well-received. And the update is up on their front page of their website for anybody who wants to get, um, a fresh look at who's living in Thurston County and what they're doing and how we're changing. The, the other item I wanted to briefly report on was that yesterday I attended the Martin Luther King Day Celebration at New Life Baptist Church, New Hope Baptist Church, New Life Baptist Church in Lacey. And it was an amazing group of people. It was inspiring speakers. And I appreciated the opportunity to bring greetings from the City of Olympia. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially.
I have nothing to report.
All right. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Ms. Selby. Just one quick item. Uh, last week I had the opportunity to testify on our behalf in favor of the Washington State, or sorry, the Evergreen Guaranteed Income Pilots. They're looking at piloting guaranteed income for 7,500 Washingtonians. Uh, and looking at, uh, some things similar to what they've been doing in Pierce County for the last year, which is, had pretty phenomenal results. So it's exciting and maybe we'll be a pilot city.
Great. Uh, city manager Jay Bernie. Oh, 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 wait, Councilmember Payne had one more.
Sorry, don't kill me. I just forgot one point, uh, which was just to mention that, um, with the, along with the Council of Neighborhood Associations, uh, Memorandum of Understanding, uh, meeting will be happening this Thursday. Uh, and I know some council, uh, members expressed interest in, uh, getting, uh, briefed on some of the specifics on that. So, uh, that's to come.
Thank you so much. City manager Jay Bernie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm stalling for a second to see if Kelly can bring a photo up for me.
You know what I didn't report out on was the meeting with the governor on Friday?
You want to do that real quick and see if Kelly can do this?
Sure, sure. So we were honored, uh, by a visit from Governor Jay Inslee on Friday afternoon. He specifically sought to, uh, reach out to us so that he could learn more about our Crisis Response Unit Program and our Familiar Faces Program. And so it was an amazing.
Response Unit program and our Familiar Faces program, and so it was an amazing presentation that our team put out there, and a little, even some tear-jerking, you know, stories, and he was very impressed, and he brought his wife Trudy as well to learn more, and his, a lot of his policy staff were there, and it was just definitely a proud moment for the city, and we were able to explain, you know, how we were able to afford it, even though we're a small city by most standards, by the support, or through the support of our voters for the public safety ballot measure back in 2017, well before there was all the talk about crisis response alternatives in public safety. So, anything else you want to add?
No, I just want to thank our crew, Familiar Faces team, for their really honest conversation, actually emotional conversation with the governor, and my favorite comment from one of our Familiar Faces team members, he said, "Who would have thought that someone like me, who's been in the criminal justice system, would be sitting here with an audience with the governor of the state of Washington?" And I just thought, I mean, I think it hit everybody in the room, about the power of these programs, and how we're trying to change lives, not just for those that they're serving, but for those individuals as well, who by the creation of these programs. And the other Familiar Faces employee said similar, but who would ever thought I'd be working as an employee of a police department?
She'd spent, like, I think, 11 years in prison.
In the correction system.
Correction system, and she had left, you know, the house that morning and told her 18-year-old daughter that she finally got custody back with it, she was going to go meet the governor that day. It just, like, she goes, it's just unbelievable, so.
So, yeah, thank you for that, mayor, and I just, I just want to lift up those responders. They're doing amazing work in our community. We've got a lot of more, a lot more work to do to continue to grow those programs within the police department, but it's something that we're all proud of, and just want to give a shout-out to Chief Allen for all his leadership and to continue to grow those programs as well within the department.
Excellent.
And I'm just going to go on, looks like the photo's not going to cooperate tonight, but here's my quick report, because I know the hour's late. So a few weeks back, I learned that our Waste Resources Utility had a fan club. I learned that there was a five-year-old in our community named Ben, who knows everything there is to know about garbage trucks, and his dream was to meet one of the drivers. So I forwarded this on to the Waste Resources staff, and they sprang into action and arranged a visit with Ben and his family. He got to sit in the truck, he was presented with his very own hat, and a new garbage truck of his own, from the Waste Resources staff. His mom says that he has not taken his hat off since, he put it on, and they are so grateful that the Waste Resources staff would take the time out of their busy days to make the dream come true for one five-year-old boy in this community.
Oh, that's awesome. That is awesome.
Lovely thing.
So I want to thank Gary Franks, Donald Ragsdale, and the entire Waste Resources team that made this happen, and thank you, Ben, for showing some love for our Waste Resources drivers and staff.
Excellent, and maybe we can put that story on social media with a picture, maybe get it out that way.
Sounds great.
All right, no, that's okay. So with no further business, before the Olympia City Council were adjourned.